Please stand. August 12th, 2014, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners now in session.
Everyone would join me in prayer. Lord, thank you again for a wonderful, wonderful day you've bestowed upon us. Lord, we ask that you look over us and guide us as this board goes about conducting the business of this. We ought to look over our military, look over our law enforcement, especially put a touching hand. We have so much discord and unrest and I don't want them all around the world, but right here in our own country and right here in our own communities. Everybody back on the right. Look over us, guide us, and direct us as this board goes about the business of the people of Gulf County. Join me in the
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, a republic which stands on a nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and special.
I want to take just a moment to welcome each of you to the August 12th regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. Anyone in the audience has any business before the board today, raise your hand or be recognized and you will be heard. This time, I'm going to ask, does anyone in the audience have any concerns with the consent agenda or the information packet? Anyone in the audience? No one from the audience, I will turn to the staff. Does anyone in the staff have any questions concerning the consent or the information packet? If not, we'll turn to the board. Does any board member have any concerns with the agenda or the information packet? If none, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Smiley to accept the consent agenda and second by Commissioner Jaeger for discussion. Mr. Jaeger, you now have the floor.
I'll turn it to the attorney. He obviously has
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Good attorney, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. If I can direct the commission's attention first to page 23.
In the consent agenda.
In the consent, sir, with regards to the minutes.
All right, 23.
The bottom three categories, all reference lawsuits. I'd just ask as a, if I could ask the commission to just incorporate the comments at the very bottom of page 23 into the segment above it with regards to the original lawsuit. There's two issues, there's three different line items, two different topics. I'd ask for my final comments to be incorporated into the original lawsuit above it.
So you just have one heading, is that?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Include that in my second, whoever made the motion.
All right, Commissioner Smiley made the motion.
The second is page 46, Mr. Chairman. There's a memorandum and a recommendation with regards to a modification to the travel policy. In speaking with Mr. Butler, as well as the clerk's office, I'd ask for, just for us to add an additional clarification. There is advanced travel documentation requirements, that's advanced travel funding, and then there's also funding by the county for travel policies for not advanced funding. And I'd ask if we can just simply place a quarterly requirement, or possibly 90 days for submission of documents for travel on that travel policy, which is currently not in there.
Any problem, anything from the board?
If I can, if I, it helps at all, I know, in speaking to the clerk's office so that they can keep up with their financial reporting. Instead of waiting 10 months or 11 months towards the end of the fiscal year, they asked if they could just receive the documentation on a quarterly basis so they can keep current with their reporting and close out their books. That was a simple request.
I think that would be, to me, that makes a lot more sense. Okay. So include that. The fine, you made the motion. Mr. Commissioner Smiley, is that all right? Are you in agreement with that? All right, we've got any further discussion from anyone in the audience on this matter other from the board? Other from the board, if there's no opposition, motion passed five and oh. Information and the corrections. All right? This time, direct ourselves over here to county staff. Roberts, do you have anything before the Adam? Arring? Lanier?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I believe you are all in receipt of a letter from the sheriff's office in reference to the in reference to the Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Program Funds. What I need is board permission to apply for these funds and for the chairman to sign the letter requesting the funding for these funds to go to the sheriff's office. I have the only copy over there.
Yeah. I think the same, we don't have.
What this is, is a letter to FDLE for the Gulf County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $19,805.40 for law enforcement equipment and to the City of Port St. Joe Police Department for $13,203.60. It is customary for the board to apply for these grants and to receive those grants on behalf of the police station and the sheriff's office, and we do them manually. If I could just get board approval to sign for approval for these funds and any documentation we need to apply for them. We have a deadline of Friday to get this applied for, or we lose these funds.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I second that motion.
Second by again, repeat that, that's $19,805.
Eighteen, uh, $19,805.40 and
For the sheriff.
For the sheriff.
And the City of Port St. Joe, the police department is
13, 13, 203.60.
Okay, just want to get, all right, have a motion? Second? Yeah, I got that. Anyone from the audience on this? One? Other discussion with the board? Opposition? Motion passed five and oh.
That's all I have, sir.
Jenkins, we recognize you now.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. In front of you, you have your July report for tourist development council. June bed tax revenue was actually down 2.7 percent, which I, after analyzing it, last June, we had five weekends, five Saturdays of collections, and we also had a quarterly collection. Dollars and cents, we collected $6,032.21 less this year than we did in June. We're still pacing, we still have our goal set for 21 percent increase, but currently we are, we're at seven. So typically July, August, and September are very heavy months along with June, and we'll continue to report on our, our status. The last few weeks, we've been in planning. I had a council meeting last week, and we've set some preliminary goals, which are included in your, in your report, as well as I've included just the top line findings for a survey that we did out to help us in our planning. We'll continue to work on these goals, and in September, I will present you a scope of work that will be approved by my council. But just so you know that we're on, on pace for getting all of our marketing plans and strategic plans done for next year. I will say that next year, we are going to be focusing on the seasons. Summer, obviously, is June, July, and August, and then September, October, November's fall, then winter and spring. Just so you all know, we have great opportunity in the fall and winter and spring, and that was evident in the survey responses as well. So while we'll sustain and continue to make sure that we maintain our summer visitation, we'll be focusing, focusing heavily on the off seasons. Also, in your packets, you have our partner programs that were approved for 2014, 15. We've simplified it. We just have three programs for our partners, lodging and non-lodging. We are beginning to sell those as we prepare to do our next visitor guide. And finally, at our meeting, we discussed the additional penny for the sports complex and parks and recreation budget, and my council approved moving forward, or they recommend moving forward, and I wanted to bring it in front of you. I know we talked about this before, and Mr. Novak and I have talked about it, and I believe we're, we're ready to start the process. Is that correct, Mr. Novak? So I just wanted to let you know. That's all.
One question, please. Parks and recreation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Plural.
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Attorney, Mr. Chairman, if you, if I may.
All right, sure.
We've already started that process, basically, haven't we? This board has, we've made that motion. Do we need to clarify anything to continue that process?
You have the recommendation of the TDC. You've already instructed us to move forward on it. The only clarification I would ask at this time, and it was our recommendation, but under the statute, it's non-land use, it's required to have a public hearing. Unless you have any objection, I'd like to encourage you all to have two public hearings, possibly in September, or the last meeting in August, first meeting in September, so that you can receive as much public comment on the ordinance, and we'll get it advertised. It's not required to have two, but we'd like to encourage the board, if you would.
So move, Mr. Chairman, to have two public hearings on that.
All right. That will be in August.
We're going to shoot for the
August and September, okay, on these public hearings, okay.
Thank you.
Got a motion over here, second. Anyone from the audience? There's only public hearings. Opposition? Motion passed five and oh. Ordinance, August and September. Okay, where we at? Ms. Jenkins, that's it for you. Mr. Whitfield? Nothing, Mr. Lowry?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I've got one thing, just wanted to give the board an update on this White City dock repair, where we had a barge hit that back around April. Last time I brought that up before you, we were working with our agent and carrier, filed claim with them. They have since then seen, if you'll look at this email, you'll see that there's an exclusion in our policy, that there was an oversight on. If you'll look at it, I'll read a piece of it. "In recent meetings with Pidgeot, which is our carrier, it was brought to my attention that there's an applicable coverage exclusion related to the loss in which a boat struck, damaged, boat struck and damaged the Gulf County Dock, which is the White City Dock. My apologies on this oversight in our previous conversations." And that's from, that's from our adjuster, from our insurance company. Since then, I've reached out to our agent, Paul Dawson, with Brown and Brown. He has now filed claim with the company that hit the dock. They have assigned an adjuster to the claim, and they, as of yesterday, they sent in a surveyor out there to survey the dock. Haven't heard back from him today. Should hear something this week. Lee and Mark met with them out there yesterday. I hope it, I hope it turns out to be better than what we suspected in the beginning as far as funding. We, we went out for RFP on this project. The bids came in about double than what we anticipated, so a lot more damage than we really anticipated.
What did the bids come in at? Remind me.
Uh, the high bid is around $65,000. So around $65,000 and $50,000, and I can give you, get you a copy of that or email it.
I think at some point, we're going to have to fix this thing no matter what, so we need to be prepared to, at some point, to move forward.
Let me ask you a question now. Our insurance is going after the, the boat or vessel, whatever you want to call it, that struck this. Their insurance not liable for this?
They, they are. I spoke, I actually spoke to the owner, tried to reason with him, and, and worked a claim through him, and to get contact info from his carrier. He didn't want to work with me, so I contacted our agent, Paul Dawson, and he has since then filed directly with his carrier, and we've had no contact with the owner. But they, I believe they realize that they're liable, the insurance company. They've sent, they've assigned an adjuster, and they've also sent the surveyor out there. So that tells me they realize that, and we've, we've got documentation as well, we've got police reports and, and a witness, so.
Mr. Lowry, what type of vessel, was this a commercial vessel that hit the dock?
It was. And, and if you'll read, if you'll look at the last page of the exclusions Mr. Cozing was referring to, on number 13, show loss, loss or damage to any structure located in water, including but not limited to bulkheads, docks, piers, wharves, retaining walls, boardwalks, underwater conduit from, and you'll see under B, impact of watercraft. This barge was 57 foot long, I believe.
So it was a barge, and, and who owned the barge?
The Frenkel and Company is the insurance company, and
Can you say that again?
Frenkel, F-R-E-N-K-E-L and Company.
That's the insurance company or the owner of the barge?
And, and the name, the name of the company is Creole Chief Incorporated.
Can you spell that for me?
Creole, C-R-E-O-L-E.
Okay.
Chief Incorporated.
Chief Incorporated.
Right, out of New Orleans.
Out of New Orleans. And so they were coming into White City and docking there for some reason.
From what I understand, they were coming in to pick someone up off that dock and came in too hot and hit the dock, so.
Well, that's split hairs. These insurance companies, I have no use. They own the barge, or is it somebody else's barge? It's, their boat happened to be pushing somebody else's barge. There's all kind of little hangups when you're dealing with insurance.
That's right, and, and from what I understand, the company, the owner, did not even make contact with his insurance company, so he's got a little issue there as well.
Mr. Dawson is pursuing this through the other insurance company
That's exactly right.
On our behalf.
Yep. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry. Sanford, you have anything to report for today? Nothing, sir. Ms. Catherine, please come up.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
We got a, we sent a bid out for some equipment we're trying to get rid of. Bid number 1314-28. There were six vehicles on here, two of them we didn't receive a bid on, so if we, we'd like the board to allow us to go send those out for bid again, when we have, we have some other stuff that we're going to group together, and we'll just add those back in the next time, see if we can get somebody to bid on those. The other four, it was a 1994 Chevrolet C-10 pickup, VIN number 13333. We got a bid of $251.99. An 88 Model Ford F-150, VIN 18687, a bid of $100. A 2,000 mile Chevrolet four-wheel drive extended cab pickup, VIN 26491, $250, and a 97 International 4,700 flatbed, VIN 61464, a bid of $200, totaling $801.99. We'd like the board, we recommend the board accept that, and we'd also ask that, had conversation with the clerk, we'd like to roll that $801.99 over into next year into our equipment fund.
Mark, these things obviously didn't run.
No, they're, they're in critically bad shape.
Just basically scrapped now. Okay.
Let me ask you another question. $801.99, what did the scrap dealer gave you?
Well, I, we have done this before, and the scrap dealers have bid on them. They didn't even bid on these this time, so I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know what it would have run. They would have had to come get them. I don't know. It may have been worth it, may not, I don't know.
We just
So move for the recommendation, Mr.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger. I need a second. Second by Commissioner Mike Lamore. By the audience, any discussion on these vehicles that we're about to take off our inventory? I thought this motion passed five and oh. Thank you. Thank thank you today. Richardson?
Yes, sir, and your information packet is a copy of our annual progress report for CRS. This is for your review, comments, and for the staff. We'll be solidifying it at the next board meeting, and this is part of our recertification process. Also, we'll be sending out property owners' letters a little bit later on. They're going, this year, I'm trying to incorporate a lot of information on the Bigfoot Waters Act and everything that's going on, try to help the public information wise, so it's going a little bit, little bit thicker and probably costs a little bit more to mail. And also, just for public information, we're continuing on the 2007 manual. This is 2013 manual. And when we come up for a cycle visit, we'll have to pick up with this one. And this, what we're going through now, we increased a little bit more in paperwork and documentation, so there's a lot to get that 10 percent, you know, reduction for those in the flood zones and those in non-flood zones, 5 percent. So this is just for the board's information public, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Summer? Thank you today. Kapinski?
Yes, sir, I have a few things. First of all, I wanted to report to the board that we did hold our first economic development organizational meeting. Had a very good turnout, very good meeting. We did the Sunshine Training and, and got everybody's paperwork in order, and they also agreed that they will be meeting on a quarterly basis to begin with, and we're currently in the process of scheduling our next meeting.
That's sometime September, maybe October?
I'm not for sure yet, but, but we're, we're working on getting the agenda together for that and all the, all the documentation with the Enterprise Zone maps and things. The next thing I have is a change order, I think there should be a copy of it in front of you, on the Land's Landing Boat Ramp Project. One of the items in the grant is paving of the parking lot, and we received a quote from our contractor to resurface the entire parking lot and re-stripe it for $16,700. So we're requesting an extension or an increase to the change order in the amount of $16,700. And then we also want to extend the deadline for completion to August 29th.
All that change order covered in the grant? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is it? Okay, good. Motion in order. So move, Mr. Chairman. By Commissioner Mike Lamore. Jaeger, all right.
So the paving of the parking lot was not in the original bid?
No, ma'am.
Is there, is there a reason why it was left out? It just wasn't contemplated, or?
Well, we were actually going to bid that separately, and then the contractor, when they were building the, the dock down to the floating dock, they had done some damage to it, and they had to pave a part out of their own pocket, and so they have a company coming in anyway, and so we were able to, we were, oh, they're paying for that part, and then they're just going to resurface the rest of it, and the increase was 16,700.
Or efficiency, they'll do the whole, okay.
Motion here, second here, anyone from the audience on this Land's Landing Boat Ramp paving? The other question here for the board members? I thought this motion passed as five and oh.
Also, on Land's Landing, we do have one other thing we have to do is a kiosk, that's part of the grant, and so I wanted to get with Ms. Jenkins on that, because I know she's been putting them at several of the other boat ramps and parks, and we wanted to make it look the same, and so we still will have to do that, but there's, there will be enough money left in the grant to purchase the materials for that. And the last thing I have is just a reminder, I don't know if Mr. Jaeger and yourself have received your packets for the Bay County RTP meeting that's to be held in Chipley on August 18th. It's at, I believe, 10:00 AM Central Time. I just, if you haven't gotten your agenda, I will, I will follow up with that, but I wanted to remind you of it, because we really need to, you guys really need to be there. I am the liaison, but I have no voting authority at that meeting, and also, there's an Enterprise Florida meeting on that day in Marianna, and so if at all possible, I need to attend the one in Marianna. But I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of the, the one in Chipley.
Well, I saw it earlier, but I haven't. Okay, all right, on the 18th. Anything else, Ms. Kapinski?
That's it, sir, thank you.
Set off, all right. Just Just, just one question. Mr. Twan, will we need to, will you need a vote on that kiosk for the money of that?
No, sir. It's, it's well under the bid limit, so we won't have to go out for bids for that, and it's already a part of the grant agreement.
Kapinski, when you schedule the economic development meetings, could you please email the board and let us know when they are scheduled?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Kapinski, is that it for you?
Yes, sir.
Go to our attorney. Novak.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in front of each of you, there's a two-page document with the attorney's office letterhead on it. That document is a product of, the second page is a product of your consultant, Cardinal Entrix. We've had, after you've engaged them for the Habitat Conservation Plan, they've had their initial organizational meeting here in Gulf County in our EOC building. One of the first steps under their contract is to develop a steering committee of the community representatives and as well as state and regional reps. On the second page, you'll see there's 13 members that they've suggested, after consulting both state and regional reps, to form your steering committee, and then also, in addition to that, the county staff recommendations for the participants in that steering committee. And if, if I may, I would, I'm not going to go through the county staff, but I'd like to talk about the first 13, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The recommendation of Cardinal Entrix for the HCP, which is consistent with other communities that have gone through this process, is the, a representative from the following, which is the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Park Service, St. Joe Company, Autobahn Society, Coastal Community Association, Realtors Association, Builders Association. They've made a recommendation from Ms. Barbara Els, St. Joe Humane Society Representative, the City of Port St. Joe, Florida DOT, and Agglan Air Force Representative. And then from 14 through 24, you'll see various county staff that they've recommended. The purpose will be consistent with their contract, is they're going to send out invitations to these regional partners. They're going to invite them to your meetings in the EOC for these public hearings. They'll begin drafting your HCP. You'll have public hearings on this process throughout the next year, and the steering committee is going to be making recommendations to your consultant and staff on the various components of your critical habitat plan. And then ultimately, ideally next summer or next spring, the steering committee and your consultant will provide you a final recommended HCP for your consideration and approval. So if I can ask the chairman if you would entertain a motion to adopt this recommendation from your consultant?
Have a motion? So move, Mr. Chairman. Pushing by Commissioner Jaeger. Second by Commissioner Mike Lamore.
In discussion. Mr. Chairman, the public really needs to pay attention to these public hearings. It's going to affect building on your own properties in some ways, this, this Habitat Conservation Plan, so they need, everybody needs to pay attention to it.
And to that point, Commissioner, you'll see the list there. That is their estimation of the different industries and different community associations, and it crosses the entire community, so all those groups are going to be affected by it in some way or another. The staff will work with them to give them, obviously, contact information locally for our CCA, our Builders Association, our Realtors Association, and what have you.
Okay. Anyone from the audience? Anyone in the audience? For the board discussion? All right. Mr. Jaeger made the motion. By Commissioner Michael Moore. Motion passed five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, following up on your budget committee meetings of last month, we had a very positive and productive meeting last week with Sacred Heart. Following your instructions and your budget recommendations, we had gone to the Trust Committee at the Sacred Heart Hospital on their quarterly meetings. We had discussed the county's proposed budget for the coming year. And at that time, Mr. Hall from Sacred Heart and I had set up a meeting here at the county with county staff. The result of that meeting last week, as I indicated, was extremely productive. And the Sacred Heart and Gulf County staff are going to be going to the next Trust Committee meeting for your half-cent sales tax and making a unified recommendation to them that they enable the county to make the necessary budget amendments for your unused surplus of half-cent sales tax for this EMS budget recommendation that you've all made. In addition to that, right now, I believe in working with Mr. Houston and Mr. Butler, we have approximately $80,000 outstanding of underinsured, uninsured, and indigent care that the county's provided. That deficit needs to be closed. And as you all move forward, we address that with Sacred Heart as well for these non-emergency transports from folks from Sacred Heart to Bay County. And that will be another recommendation that we go to the Trust Committee with to address that shortfall that you come up fiscally each year. It ultimately will show up as bad debt if it's not collected. And the ability for us to utilize that half-cent sales tax, which was adopted for indigent, uninsured, and underinsured, fits the mission of that ordinance and that sales tax. Right now, your projected annual revenue is slightly over $600,000 for this coming year. Your obligation under the MOU is $460,000. So that will leave you roughly about $140,000, if the projections are accurate, that the county, Sacred Heart, the Trust Committee, and the EMS can work with. And we'll report back after we have that next Trust Committee. We've requested a date as soon as possible to comply with your budget hearing schedules on September 10th.
All right, just the people understand, just brief you on this. I've been working on this myself and the attorney, probably, what, two years?
Yes, sir.
But those ambulances, they belong to you taxpayers. People use them, they expected to pay. We've been running a taxes service, Sacred Heart, and there's money there. They need to pay. You have to pay. I have to pay. They should pay. Or either we've got two options. They come forward, we have ways to get money because we're bringing in more than they're requiring. Or we just cut it out. But we cannot continue to burn fuel, pay salaries, wear and tear on our vehicles, buy the free service. And this board has been over backwards. We've done everything. We need this facility out here. It's a wonderful, wonderful facility. We cannot continue. We put, talking with Mr. Whitfield, I think, calendar year-to-date over 200 transport. This hospital, the one in Panama, when you leave up and we will hit you go where I live and go to Sacred in Bay County, ambulance never goes back, never transfers. Been working on this for two years. We've been very patient. We've been trying to work with Sacred Heart. It's come down to where it's going to all come to a head here very shortly. And I think we, and we've already located where they don't have to cut us a check. We can get the money. If there's one penny left over, at our expenses, we give it back to them. We're not going to pull profit off of them. Give them back. Give it back. But they've got to pay their bills. All right, Mr. Attorney, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lynn, is this the only copy of the ACHA report?
That's the only copy. I had a copy of your problems this morning, and I apologize, Mr..
To, on the, on the last point, commissioners, Lynn had received an email last night, or yeah, last night, from ACHA with regards to a primary care award. And as you've done in the past, a ACHA lip grant. And in the past, you've all participated. In the past three years, you've all voted to add some additional revenue to get a matching grant here in Gulf County to the tune of $230,000, $240,000.
I was requesting 268 plus.
That's correct. So each year, the number fluctuates. In the past, you had that surplus that we've discussed in that half-cent sales tax. She just received this last night. I wanted to bring it to your attention. We've had that meeting with Sacred Heart last week addressing your half-cent sales tax and any potential surplus. This is a decision that you all will need to make going forward, but this came in. I'll ask Lynn if you can circulate this to the commissioners.
I will.
And then presumably, at your next meeting, you can make a determination on what you'd like to respond to this latest request. But I want to add to that, that you have marched down a different direction with your surplus on your sales tax. So there's only so many surplus funds that you're going to be able to allocate. And this is a decision you'll have to give us some direction at your next meeting. And I was going to provide that to you.
That match money of $265,000, what does that generate for the total amount of the grant? I mean, is that a 50/50?
A million 26 is what Sacred Heart receives.
And that's hard to, but, but, I mean, there's only so much money there. Do we know after, after we get our funding back from that half-cent sales tax, what amount's going to be left? Or is there going to be any amount left?
The amount that I just spoke of, I mean, on Sherry's latest reports, is about $140,000. In the last four years, you have contributed to these programs and these grants in excess of $700,000 of additional sales tax to get those matching grants for the community. In your budget committees, now you have that decision, obviously. There's not going to be enough for both.
Okay.
On the projected revenue. I think that's about 140 is correct.
And that's if all dollars are collected?
Correct. Let me just add, even if you did, your projection was accurate, right now, you would not have enough to match this grant.
Okay.
So I need that. And we'll provide that to you as well.
I don't know.
Commissioners, just in 2011, you adopted a revised and restructured TDC ordinance for policies and procedures. What we structured is a staggered expiration of appointment terms. We are now in the first phase of those rolling out. And you'll have four vacancies, I believe, coming up this fall. Consistent with your procedures and your ordinance that we adopted in 2011, you'll have four new appointments to place on your TDC. And consistent, what we put in the language three years ago was that we would advertise that on our website. So we have spoken with Ms. Jenkins. We're going to put that notice on there. There's also your advisory board policy and application that's on the county website. The cutoff is September 1st. And I wanted to bring it to your attention. And I know Ms. Jenkins is working with her commission, her committee. And for the folks that are in the community that wish to apply for the TDC, the cutoff is that date. And then all those applications will be all provided to you all for those appointment and vacancies. I have some more. Yes, sir. I don't know if you have.
Hold just a moment. Yes. Question here.
Ms. Attorney, one question with that, with that policy. We all know volunteers are hard to get to sit on these programs and advisory boards and the whole nine yards. If we go out for advertisement, for these new people to come in and fill their slots, if we don't receive any, the people that already sits there, if they wanted to continue on, would that be possible? You follow my asking?
Two things. One, we're going to do a public notice. I just want the public to know that it's not going to be a formal advertisement, it'll be a public notice on our website. And Ms. Jenkins will have it in the TDC applications. In terms of resubmitting to fill again, as we've come up with in the past, and I brought it to your attention, we have a policy in place for serving on multiple committees, which you all have pulled that back now and enabled people to serve on multiple advisory boards. That policy was rescinded a few months ago. The second policy that's still in place is you have a policy that says two-term limits. And I believe it was from '04 or '05. I can get the specific year that it was passed by this board. But right now, this county has a policy that you can serve up to two terms in an advisory capacity so that you can enable other people to serve on it. But that is a policy. It's not an ordinance. It's something that you, as a commission, can set or rescind. But that is in place right now.
So basically, we could, we could possibly rescind that in the process after, if we need to. So I think we can, let's, let's see what happens and go from there.
Yeah. And again, by statute, these are four-year appointments for your TDC. And the policy can be applicable to certain committees, too. So as you move forward in the next couple of weeks, as we get to the September 1st cutoff, there's an ability for you to rescind it for the TDC or for all county policy, all committees?
It's so hard to get these volunteers. You know, we've got people out there that, we have people out there in the public that files complaints against them. You know, if it's complaints, who would want to sit on one of them to start with? But, so it's so hard. So I want to kind of hear that up. You know, if we have a good group of people or somebody that's, that's sitting on one of these boards or whatever, and they want to continue on, you know, I'd like to see this board have the authority to move them on if they, if they want to move forward with it.
That's all. Okay.
Mr. Novak, if you could just state the general requirements for sitting on the TDC. I know there are specific requirements just for the public's knowledge.
Sure. You either need to be a bed tax collector, which is half of the board it's comprised of. And then there's a second category of tourism-related industry businesses. So we have, half of our board is comprised of bed tax collectors that fall into that classification. The other half is tourism-related industry. And just for clarification, it's June 21st, 2004 was the term limits placed on your committees. And it's applicable to all committees in the county other than your PDRB.
Chairman, can I ask one more question?
All right. Go here, then we.
The four appointments, do we know if it will affect them? Any of the four appointments?
Yeah, they're two terms.
It will.
All of them?
Wait a minute.
All of them?
Three of the four are bed tax collectors and have served, will serve their two terms. And one is tourism-related. So those, those seats have to be filled specifically because the other four members of my council fit the other. So there's, there's one bed tax collectors and three tourism-related industry residents. And then the other, and this, these four are three bed tax collectors and one tourism-related.
Now, let me just hold up a minute. You came onboard, we reorganized, we completely polished the old TDC. Are some of these carryovers from the old TDC? You said they can't serve but two full-year terms.
I believe that they were all resigned and were reappointed in 2000, prior to.
Now, we need to clear that up.
Sure.
Okay, let's go over here.
The commission received, invited the past TDC members to resubmit applications for reappointment when we adopted the new ordinance.
Yep.
And this commission accepted those applications and reappointed them for these renewed terms.
So that carries over then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That, yeah, kind of drifting away here a little bit. Okay, that's all I have. I just hate to, you know, I hate to see if we have something that is working for us and everybody seems to be satisfied. I hate to disrupt it. That's my point.
There's a lot of knowledge there that you're going to lose.
There is.
May I say one more thing, too?
Sure.
Just, it also affects, pardon me, we have five subcommittees that are, so they serve as council members. And then they're each divided into a budget committee, a marketing committee, a beach grooming committee, an ordinance committee, what was the other one? There's one more out there. So just, that's the other makeup of the council. They serve on the, on the, on the subcommittees as well as the council.
One question. May I?
Sure, sure, sure. Then we got it.
And Ms. Jenkins.
Sorry.
Ms. Jenkins, are, are you very satisfied with your council?
Very much so. They, they're very dedicated and they got, have guided us well. And I really appreciate the work that they do and how they, the time they spend and their analysis of our programs.
Jim, and this is what I'm talking about. We're going to, we're going to recognize the policy. We're going to follow the procedures.
Policy.
Thank you.
All right. Now, let's see where we're at. We're going back over to the attorney.
Mr. Chairman, the last item I have is to update you on the Port Authority. As you recall, from the last month and a half, you've had several meetings, extended a financing opportunity for the port. And I've had, since had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Gibson and finalize those terms. With your permission today, I'm going to provide them with a, a new mortgage, not a modified mortgage, after I had reviewed it. We've already done a subordination on the past collateral. I've spoken with Tom. I'm providing the Port Authority a new mortgage, a new note for the total amount of 319, a loan agreement addendum to the CDBG agreement that I had provided to them three years ago. The terms that you had provided to them and approved was the additional $60,000 for the next two years at 3%. The note and the mortgage terms will also toll the past three years and add an additional three years to their loan agreement. In essence, what it will do is it will start the clock over for those, for those, that period. On the third year, it will be, they'll begin to make installment payments against that note. And on the 10th year, it'll balloon and the final payment will be due to the county. In addition to that, we'll secure first mortgage rights on their chemical Arizona, their Arizona Chemical Site. And the last item and the requirement I had was I also had asked Tom to go to his commission tomorrow, their meeting tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock at the Community College, is to provide the county with a resolution indicating that they all waive their rights to legally challenge the ability to borrow money from the county, as well as the ability to encumber the Arizona Chemical Site. As you know, that was an issue that's come up in the past. And the last item was an opinion letter I'd asked for, from Mr. Gibson as their counsel to provide the county, as their counsel of those, their ability to borrow that money from the county as well. So he'll be carrying that forward tomorrow with your final approval. And you'll provide the chairman the ability to sign those loan instruments. And we can then address the last part, which is the actual financing. I believe it's in your industrial park fund currently.
That's correct.
And we'll have to move that to a budget line item so that we have those funds available this year to provide to them. And I think, Mr. Butler, we had looked, it was approximately about $200,000 in that fund, plus $200,000 in the industrial park fund. And we will ask for your permission to move that to a line item for this year. And then next year, we'll move, and we'll address the other $60,000 next year. But I'd ask for you for a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, to sign those documents and for us to make those budget amendments.
Yeah, we need to wrap this.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner Smiley, second. Right in discussion right over here.
I just have two things.
Sure.
One thing is the environmental. And I thank you for forwarding to me what Mr. Gibson had provided to you regarding a Phase One environmental assessment. When Mr. Gibson was before this board, he stated that the Port Authority had had a Phase Two environmental assessment done. And apparently, they had not, and he was mistaken. I have reservations about the fact that there was not a Phase Two environmental assessment done. And of course, as you know, it was a luminous amount of materials that was provided. And in the Phase One, there were a few open-ended issues. And it was done a few years ago. And as a member of this board, I will rely on you as the county attorney to advise us as to the status of that Phase One. And I know we're in a lending capacity and what our protections are under CIRCLA and RICRA. And I just would like to have that from you as our county attorney to advise us on the issue of environmental. My second issue is, I know that we have approved $60,000 for two years. I, I just want some type of benchmark for the second year, not anything huge for them to meet, but if, if, and I don't believe that this will be the case, but if they don't exist, do we have an out for that $60,000 payment the second year? I don't want us to be, and I, I know you've probably already thought about this, but I don't want us to be on the hook for the $60,000 if there's nothing happening. So those are my two issues.
If I can, Commissioner, I'll address the second one. The, the loan agreement language from three years ago, and I'll be happy to get it to the commission and the public record, has very specific performance terms for the Port Authority. The contract addendum that's going to be provided to them to sign is going to require them to continue to honor those obligations. Reporting at the podium, giving you all job reports, job creation, economic development status reports. As you've heard, Tom and some of the other members have come to you, and you were all at the meeting recently at the Port Authority, of the dredging permits and the progress that they've all made and the state funding that's going to be coming here, ideally in the next year. Those performance terms are in the loan agreement. They'll be extended to this additional $120,000 at any time that this commission obviously has those issues. issues. It gives us the vehicle on which we can address them and address the funding. I'll be happy to put that mechanism in that loan agreement to address that. Next year, obviously, they need to fully comply with the loan agreement terms in order to get that additional funding. I know that was a concern of the Port Authority. They'd expressed at the meeting that you two were at, Mr. Yeager, Commissioner Bryan, that the county obviously provides the funding, but also that they have the autonomy to continue to function independent of any regulations. That loan agreement, similar to any other conventional loan, will have requirements of them to report to you as the commissioners for the tax money they receive of the progress that they're...and the forward progress that they're making. Second one on the environmental, Commissioner. As you indicated, first and foremost, we are going to be lending money to the Port Authority, the commission and the taxpayers will be. You will not be taking possession or title to this property at a later date down the road, three years if they were to default, or 13 years...I'm sorry, 10 years from now if they were not to take...honor the obligation. The county would have that ability to be a first priority on the property to foreclose and take ownership. Until we do take that, obviously, there is some insulation for the county. We don't hold title to the property. You're correct. I spoke with Tom. He said he did not know how it got out that there was a Phase 2, but there never was. So, there's a Phase 1, extensive Phase 1. They addressed some of the issues, and the DEP has since sent them letters clarifying those few issues that they've cleared up. That language also, in terms of insulating the county and waiving those rights against the county, will be provided to them in that loan instrument as well, and I've asked and addressed that with Tom. So, there are firewalls set up. We're not taking ownership of this property, and I guess, at the end of the day, this loan agreement, the only asset they have left, we've talked about their revenue generation or anything else, this is their only asset. So, in order to secure this loan that you're providing to them, this is their only parcel. But those environmental issues will be addressed, and I have reviewed that Phase 1 report with Mr. Gibson.
And I just want to state for the public that I have voted for this additional funding to the Port Authority. I do support the development of the port. I do have some reservations regarding the history here with the Port Authority, and we have the 199 that's out there, and this board has expressed concern regarding the lack of communication and the lack of payment on the 199. So, I do enter into this additional $60,000 for the next two years with some concern. However, it gives us an opportunity to secure these funds and to secure the unsecured 199 that we have currently on this property, and in that regard, to secure those funds and to also hopefully assist the Port Authority in moving forward. That is why I have supported this issue, but I've received quite a few calls on it, and I just want to clarify that.
Chairman, can I also say, because I've had some folks call me about, what are you doing with tax dollars, you know, only...I do...they're still tax dollars, but I want the public to understand that every dollar so far that we've put in with the Port Authority has been EDA grant dollars. It's been economic development grant dollars that come from the federal government, and it's not come out of property tax. It's...you still say, I mean, the grant dollars are coming from somewhere. They're coming from the taxpayer, but they're not coming from the property taxpayer in Gulf County. And I wanted to clarify that because some people, I think, were thinking that part of their property taxes were going for this, and this is EDA grant funds.
Okay.
Just, Mr. Chairman, I don't need a motion to move forward and purveyor those documents and also authorize you to sign on behalf of the commission.
Let's go back over here. Who made the motion?
Yeager made the motion.
Who?
Yeager.
Commissioner Yeager?
Made the motion.
Second.
Smiley, second.
Commissioner Smiley, okay, we're just...all right. Any further...anyone from the audience on this port, on this loan? We're trying to...just for information, we got it. We're securing your money. That's all we've asked out of this port from the beginning. Give us some security. You know, we had some on the other in Capital City. They went to a foreclosure. We didn't know what loan them was, $199,000, what, 2011. So, that's it. We're just trying to secure you. Get some security on money out there, and I think the attorneys have that already worked out, and hopefully we can get that clarified tomorrow. All right, any...anyone from the port? Any more discussion on this port issue? If not, no opposition, motion passed. Five and O for the attorney to proceed. All right, you still have the floor.
That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first item is due with the Building Department. We've got a transition in place in the next near future. I'm talking about near future, next year. There will be three or more people of your top people moving on, retiring out, and the plan is to...and Lee has been working in Public Works, with Public Works for about the last year and a half, Lee Collinsworth, usually building official. Lee, there's a need for Lee in the lineup in Public Works, something that Lee has agreed to. As time goes on, he's got a little overlapping time before people retire out, and in so doing, we need a building official. The legislative body being the County Commission would need to appoint a building official for the Building Department. George Knight has been the point man in the Building Department for the last year and a half, so to speak. Lee has been the building official, but George has been the man in the office while Lee's over at Public Works. My recommendation to you is to recognize and allow, send a letter to the state, to DBPR, Department of Business Professional Regulation, indicating that George Knight is Gulf County building official. We do that. The license board will meet on October 15. They will give his provisional license then, and he'll actually start as soon as you make a vote on it. He'll be the building official. You know, he can...we've already checked. He can go into office. We have, in addition to George, we still have employed two credentials building officials, one being Lee Collinsworth, one being Michael Hammond, both hold their credentials as building officials. So, my recommendation to you is to allow George Knight to be the building official.
I need a motion, send this letter.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I got a motion by Commissioner Mike Lamore.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bryan. No discussion, any discussion from anyone in the audience? One from the audience, no further. Motion passed, five and O. You'll get that off very shortly.
Yes, sir. We'll get it off today.
Thank you.
The chairman along that line, there's a transition in place, and I'd be glad to talk to individual commissioners as you have time to talk, but it's going to be a...it's going to be great for Public Works. Lee, we need room for Lee to be in Public Works and do what we need done. George is going to be great for the Building Department. David's going to be moving out sometime within the next year and got plans on filling that vacancy. And in so doing, that creates another vacancy, and we've got some plans and steps from down the road to make everything work out, and it's going to work out good. But be glad to talk to any of you guys anytime you want to talk.
Good deal. All right, next.
Mr. Chairman, next item is due with the, what we call Troy Deal Parking. Troy Deal is a parking area just north of Stumpo on the Bayside. We have a lease agreement, a sublease agreement with DEP, you know, with Kama, coastal aquatic management area, and to park, and we use Troy Deal Parking as a primary parking area for the Beach Nursery Project. Troy Deal, the fact we have, we have three of them, one being Troy Deal, one being Jones Drive, one being...
Cape Palms.
Cape Palms. Those three primary parking areas. Each one of those is worth 1.2 million dollars. State of Florida provided 1.2 million dollars, which kept the local taxpayer house provide 1.2 million dollars for those three primary beach access points. The criteria has to be that you have 100 parking slots and a restroom, and we maintain it. We...two are in good shape. We have an amendment to the sublease with Troy Deal, with DEP. Been working on it for, Mr. Yeager, probably over two years now, with DEP. It's been a drag, but now we have an agreement for them to give us an additional one and a quarter acres at Troy Deal, and once we sign, if the chairman...if you approve us today, the chairman signs today, we'll send it back to Tallahassee. They will execute and send back to us, send us a copy back. Then we can go in and stabilize that parking lot at Troy Deal.
We're going to pick up 1.1 acre?
1.25, just shy of 1.25, almost of one and a quarter acres.
Okay.
But my recommendation to you is to allow the chairman to sign the...with contingent upon the attorney approval, his review of the agreement, and all the agreement does is add more acres to our current agreement. This is an amendment to the current agreement we have. My recommendation to you is, contingent upon attorney review, to allow the chairman to sign. We'll send this back to Tallahassee.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, second by Commissioner Smiley. Any more discussion on this? Anyone from the audience on this parking issue? Opposition? Motion passed, five and O.
That's all I have right now.
Have anything?
That's it.
Okay, all right. Thanks, sir. Share?
Good.
All right, sir. Get rolling right here. Try to move along. It's...Mr. Smiley, we'll acknowledge you first.
Well, don't mind. Could you go over to Commissioner Yeager? I was trying to wait on someone.
Okay, surely. All right, all right. Then we'll just go over and come this way. Commissioner Yeager, you have it.
I will tell you just a couple of things I wanted to talk about on 10 and 11 on your information packs. We got a letter back from FDOT, and basically, our meeting that we had with FDOT regarding Gulf Coast Parkway went very well. They saw the need that there needed to be other options so that Gulf County and Bay County can actually benefit off this project. So, if you'll read there, it's basically saying that they have come up with an alternative, another alternative that will benefit Gulf and Bay. They're going to present that to the...and I think they've already presented it to the Federal Highway Administration, and as long as they approve that other option, they're going to put that other option on the table, and we'll be at the next hearing. So, I think going forward, there was a lot of concern from the Port Authority, a lot of concern from some local residents on that. So, I think we've got that going in the right direction. We may have a solution to that. So, I just wanted to...that's for information. Also, had been talking with the sheriff since they've redone C-30, 38. Some of the signage on the speed limits is confusing. There's 35s on one side of the road and 45s on the other, and it's just confusing to the public and confusing for the sheriff to enforce. So, I've asked DOT to come down, and let's see if we can't manage that and change that without a traffic study. What he's going to do...what DOT is going to do is bring their traffic study folks down. If they can approve setting those limits and getting the signage right, and this is for informational purposes, they will do that. If not, they'll do a traffic study and change the signs then. But it's coming. I know that there's some concern out there because I've had the calls, but a traffic study is coming, and clearing those road signs up on that state highway is going to be fixed. So, that's for information. I did want to recognize that we've got a long-term, old city commissioner out in the audience that I haven't seen in a long time. Benny, obviously, Benny, it's good to have you here. Appreciate your service to the community over the years, and been a friend of Benny's for a long time. It's good to see him. Good to see him out there. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I think, well, I did want to say we had another restore meeting. The monies from Treasury are...they say days away now. So, I'm not going to...I'm not going to hold my breath, but they say that the money's there. We are continuing to contribute a couple thousand dollars a year as a small county into that fund. Most of the larger counties are contributing the larger amounts of money to keep this consortium going, but the money's coming shortly, we think. And so, once that money gets here, then we'll move forward with some more recommendations. The consortium is getting close to hiring a consultant to write...their main goal is to write the state expenditure plan and recommend projects for the state. Along with that, they're going to give some help to especially the smaller counties on how to get our...all of our requirements going, moving forward to Treasury. So, it's going to be a good thing. Once they get the funding, once we get the funding, it's going to be a good thing going forward. We've got DEP. The governor's appointees are there now. Everybody's involved, so it's a very transparent process going forward, and just wanted to update you there a little. We've got another meeting in September, I think, in Walton County, so I'll attend that and give you a little update from that.
Waiting on the governor. Okay, is that all, Commissioner?
That's it.
Fine, we'll go to you.
I just have one brief issue. We've had some vandalism out at the Highland View Boat Ramp, and I just want to thank the county employees out in the field and Ms. Jenkins for working together to resolve that issue and stop the vandalism and find out who the culprits were, and I appreciate the heads-up work on that. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner? Oh, we'll go here. Now, Commissioner Smiley, if you're waiting on somebody, we can go ahead and...I will. We'll go to all...and if they come in, we'll come...okay. All right, we're going to recognize that. But all right, Commissioner. I'm good. You're good?
Yes.
All right, you're good now, but you do want to retain if you're expecting someone?
They come in, I'll call them up.
All right, and they'll be recognized, and the chair has nothing to...
I'm ready. I'm ready, and I got a couple things.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
First of all, I want to start out thanking Ms. Kim and the Workforce Board for a wonderful summer program that they put on at the Washington Recreation Center. They had over 180 kids to sign up for the summer program, and they had anywhere from 100 to 125 to 130 kids to attend every day. So, I just tell all the parents who did not participate, their kids with the summer program, their kids missed a mighty good time. I mean, they took all the kids to the country club to teach them how to swim, and it was amazing that we got kids that live 100 yards from the water and don't know how to swim. So, that was a accomplishment for the staff and Ms. Kim that I just want to give a shout out because that program that they had out there this summer was just great. The Resource Center is working great. I mean, everything is running real smooth and good, and if anyone have a chance to just go out there and see what's going on, it'll be a sight for y'all to see how those guys is working great and make that program work wonderful. I want the...touch bases with our staff and thinking I get our board here to give the staff the marching orders to write me a letter to the Saint Joe Company. I got some land over on Avenue F, and I got some land over on Avenue G that the Saint Joe Company used to keep cut, and they telling us that they can't cut it no more, but this is just really getting out of control. So, I would like someone to write a letter to them and see what we can do to get that taken care of because there's not that much grass, but they've been doing it for a long time, keeping it cut back up off the people houses and stuff and off the highway. So, I would love for that, that we look into that.
All right, one question on that.
Yes, sir.
Is it in the city?
Yes, sir.
In the city?
Yes, sir. It's in the city, but it don't seem like it's getting cut. So, I'm kind of stepping up to the plate, and I want to take a swing at the ball myself.
Well, maybe we need...
So, if...
Maybe we need to...
Is it Saint Joe land?
Yes. Mr. Butler, could you kind of...the same land that we...
Saint Joe land, so city or the county can't go private.
How many acres is it? Or is it acres or...
Mr. Butler, could you help me out with that?
It's along the railroad track between the avenues and railroad track, and probably acres-wise, we're probably not talking about two, three, four acres total, but it's just a long stretch along the railroad track, and it grows up.
Okay, does the city or...
It belongs to the railroad company.
Private property.
So, it's private, and there's no easement, no city easement or nothing like that?
I think they should have an obligation to maintain their properties, so I don't have a problem with the request.
Is this a code enforcement issue that they're not keeping their property mode? Maybe code enforcement to reach out?
City's got...they got code.
Yes.
All right.
And actually, I would like to ask Mr. Clay to come up to the podium.
Met him last time, Mr. Smiley.
Ms. Clay, on the Martin Luther King project, where we at on that project?
Yes, sir. Clay Smallwood, Purpleish. All the water lines are in. All the water meters have been swapped over to the new lines. This week, the contractors going through and making their final connections into the old system in about six places. So, they're working in between the rain showers this week, but made good progress on it yesterday, and they're back working on that again today. They should finish the stormwater work on Martin Luther King this week as well, and then pouring sidewalks, pouring driveways, valve pads, and coming to a close in the coming weeks.
On that waterline project, Ms., do you have an idea what was that grant amount?
The CDBG portion was 650,000, and then there was a USDA portion for...it was right at 100,000, I think. portion for, it was right at a hundred thousand, I think.
Okay, and the, and that was for the water line project?
The six, the six fifty covered the water line, and the hundred covered the stormwater and the sidewalks on Martin Luther King.
Okay. Okay, dope. Thank you, Ms. Clay.
Yes, sir.
I am to recognize, Commissioner.
Well, I got you up there, Mr. Clay, I have two questions for you. With lands, landing boat ramp park project going on, number one, did they straighten up the number three piling?
Supposed to straighten it up and cut them off this week.
And cut them off.
And cut them off. You, are you sure where I want them cut?
The high water mark up there is twenty-four eight, I think, is on that sign, and we're going to cut them off at twenty-six, just to make it a nice even.
Two foot above the high water mark.
Yes, sir, B.
Perfect.
Hold up, Ms. Clay, I got one more.
Yes, sir.
On the Peters Park.
Yes, sir.
Did we not receive a grant for that, for that grant?
For that, the city did.
Yes.
They were, yes, sir, uh, I think it was a fifty thousand dollar FURDAP grant.
Fifty thousand dollar FURDAP grant. Thank you, Ms. Clay.
Yes, sir.
Um, I also would like to ask the board, we took and went out and spoke with Mr., the superintendent of school, I sat down and talked with Bow Nose on the project, on the David Langston Road, and guys, we got a very serious safety issue there. Um, just the other day, I was coming through that road, and it was a gentleman riding in his hub along chair that only had one leg, and it was a vehicle coming from one way, and I was coming from the other way, and we had to really stop so this guy could go in front of one vehicle, let the vehicle go past, then get him in front of the other vehicle. And DOT had put that project up at two eighteen. So I went to superintendent of school and asked, could he write us a letter to DOT asking that if we could move that project up from two eighteen? I went to the city and asked Mr. Bow, could he get a letter from the city asking DOT to move that project up from two eighteen? Now I want to come to the board of county commissioners and ask us to write a letter to see can we get that project, because that is, is, they got the lights on the road, that helped out a lot, but when you got parents pushing the kids in, in scrollers and got to push it on the side of the road because you got so much traffic coming, ever since they put that dollar market there, traffic really have picked up on that road tremendously. You got your school buses that use it, you got your emergency vehicles use it, so everybody's starting to use this road, and that road is not properly prepared yet.
My, my only question, Mr. Smiley, do we have sidewalks?
No.
None, and that's what the project is?
Yes.
Yeah, so move to move it forward.
For a letter?
Yes.
I, I'll second for discussion and, and also, how much is that project? Was that a grant to the city? Was it in the amount of?
It's a lap project. The county's going to be handling, because we're lap certified, and the city's not lap certified.
How much is it, Don?
One, got the numbers. There's design, and that's coming now, and then the construction's coming in twenty eighteen. And talking with Commissioner Smiley, trying to get DOT to move construction dollars back up in line with design, and go ahead and design it, maybe a design build, instead of doing design and waiting a couple years and then building.
Okay, I, I understand it a little better now.
I think it may be in the three hundred.
Um, I know that design is like nine thousand dollars, so I think, I want to say sixty or seventy thousand.
That's right.
Sixty or seventy thousand dollars. You know, I would, I would suggest that, that once we send this letter and ask them to move it up, and I'll contact District Three, Two, Four for this project, but once we get an answer whether they will or they won't, if they won't, let's send them a letter and ask them if they will reimburse us, and I know they don't normally do that, but if they'll reimburse, and maybe the city, county, and school board can do a project together where we can all find a few dollars and get the project done. It does need to be done. I use that road now going to the dollar store.
Yes.
So it's, it's needed. That's the Saint Joe Mall.
Yeah. All right, all right, have motion on.
I got, okay, go ahead and finish.
Let's get this, motion on the floor by Commissioner Smiley. Second, if second stands, any, anyone from the audience on trying to get this moved up? Further discussion, motion passes five and oh for you to send this letter, and let's see if we can't get some relief over there. All right, you still at the floor?
Yes, and, well, I got one project that been working on for several years, and we finally received some good news from that project, but I would just like to call the Paces Foundation, Mr. Rick Hayman.
Oh, yeah.
And Ron Thompson up, so they can do, let us know where we standing at. I think everybody going to be pleased with the information that they bringing before us.
Thank you, Commissioner Smiley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mark, if you would, and right over here, name and address for this young lady.
Yeah, Leanna, I'm Mark Dumas, and Tan's so excited about it, he got me confused with my associate, Rick Hayman.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, hey, I'm excited too.
Yeah, I might say, I thought that was Mark.
I might call you Mr. McDaniels, okay.
All right.
Mark Dumas, Paces Foundation.
And?
Address. Oh, I beg your pardon, twenty-seven thirty Cumberland Boulevard, Smyrna, Georgia, three zero zero eight zero.
All right.
I'm Ron Thomason, consultant for Paces with the crew planning, fifteen thirty-two Chanley Avenue, Panama City.
Okay, Mark.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, it's a pleasure to come before you today to inform you of some very, very good news for your community, and you probably all know what we've worked on for many years. It's a gateway of property over here on Clifford Sims Road, and we submitted a tax credit application. We started about a year and a half ago through the efforts of Ron Thomason, introducing us to the community. Mr. Tan Smiley in particular has just been measurably helpful in interfacing us with the community and, and with you and the board members, and he was kind of our go-to person to make sure that we understood what the community needed and wanted and desired. Mr. Don Butler, of course, interpreted all the complex complexities of government, and with the help here as well of Mr. Novak, helping us to sort through things in the early days. We submitted a tax credit application, and in Tallahassee, it's a lottery system, unfortunately. It's gotten to the point where there's so much appetite in this state for limited resources, they just have to kind of give a lottery ball, you know, so many good qualified projects come in, and unfortunately, we'd done sixty-four units, and our lottery ball had come in at eighty-eight. Well, they, they funded up to about fifty, and we were just out of the money. Surprisingly and suddenly, with a thirty-day notice, we had an opportunity to go and secure a five point five million dollar loan, cash flow loan, low interest, zero interest loan from the state of Florida. The funds were extremely competitive, as you know. We came to you and said, the governor wants a match. He's giving out money, but he's giving up, he's giving out hand-ups, not hand-outs, and he wants to see you've got some skin in the gang. And we had already showed him the site, and we'd said, well, look, look at this land value, and they said, well, in-kind contributions or something else, we need some cash, and y'all stepped up to the plate, and I'm proud to inform you that only four projects in the entire state of Florida were selected, and this is one of them. We received a five point five million dollar loan from the state of Florida to build fifty units of townhome housing over and off Clifford Sims Drive. The board voted on that, this passed file Friday, and it is a done deal. They now send us to underwriting. The underwriting, they hire a third-party firm, and they're going to kind of bring us in and rake us over the coals, you know, they scrape around, look at all the details and everything, and we're pretty certain that what we submitted is what we're going to come out with, and again, that's fifty townhomes, two, three, and four bedrooms, rents in between four hundred and fifty and six hundred and fifty dollars. That's for a four-bedroom townhome, two bath. Those are, those are incredibly affordable rents. It's reserved for folks that earn under thirty thousand dollars, adjusted for their family size. So this provides the, the workforce, the working folk of the community, long-term affordable housing, and the rents are so low that hopefully they'll be able to put a little money aside, and they will be able to save for their own homeownership. As you may know, our long-term strategy is to develop out that forty acres. Ron has worked with the community extensively, coming up with some plans to, for long-term growth, kind of hard for all of us to imagine, but these things will unfold, things that I thought wouldn't happen thirty years ago, I'm surprised at the way they are today. I know everyone here is, is as well. The project will begin in about twelve, in about four to six months, and the first units will be open, the doors will be open in about six months after that. So for argument's sake, the start of next year's school year, from then until Halloween, we'll start opening doors and moving families in. So we're about one year away from the first doors to open, and this is for fifty housing units. These housing units will remain affordable for a minimum of fifteen years, and the state will decide whether at that time they can be sold to the residents or whether they will be continued as affordable housing rental. This is to preserve you long-term affordable housing. We know what the goals of the community are, we're going to present that to the state, and we begin the negotiations, but we're confident that this will begin construction as just as fast as we can get through the surveying and engineering and, and permitting process. Within the next week, our crews will be showing up to do the topographic surveys, the environmental surveys, the phase-one surveys and what have you, and begin the final design phases to submit to the building department and work with them, of course, to come up with a, a good plan. That's it in summary. I'd like to answer any questions, but before I do, I just have to say the following. I just have to say that Tan Smiley has been just a tremendous help in this. I mean, when we first started talking about this, Tan, it was, it was a dream, and, and through your careful guidance with us, with the community, we're just really pleased that we've gotten to this day, today. So I thank you for that. Yeah. And the same for Mr. Butler, by the way. I mean, the complexities of your government, pretty, pretty obscure for an outsider. We don't get a lot of compliments, and I thank you for that.
You're welcome, sir.
We have a commissioner here that would like to address you.
Yes, sir. Just one brief question. We're talking fifty units or fifty houses. Are, are you or your foundation, are y'all going to try to employ local contractors to build those, or are you going to bring people in?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Good question.
We, yeah, we are. Under the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, there is a section that has long been overlooked called Section Three. We are a Section Three compliant company, and what that means is we advertise and do outreach into local communities to give the least advantaged folks an opportunity to participate in the development.
Good.
So we'll, we'll be running, we'll be running ads for that.
Yes, that's good.
Absolutely.
All right, you have any?
Well, I just, I don't know how I could possibly add much to what Mark said, but there is one unique thing that I think Gulf County, of course, Saint Joe, should know. Rural counties have long been neglected in this state when it comes to judicial use of resources. To get Miami, Orlando, Tampa, and Jacksonville over ninety-six percent of the housing funds in the last twenty years is ridiculous when there is great Floridians that go lacking. This is the first county that stepped forward. I have, I'm a consultant, I work with other firms, but the firm, Paces Foundation, the group that I have been working with for eight years now and come to very truly care about, they took a gamble. They pushed into a territory that no other developers would do, rural parts of the northern Florida area, and they couldn't have picked a more beautiful and a better community, and you proved it by not only having the initiative of a commissioner fortified by the entire commission backing him, but a city government that cooperated, and in many rural areas, it's like a dog and a cat fight to have a project move forward with city and county governments. And to me, I just have been in awe at the way the whole thing went through, and I think leadership of this community should be commended, and the millions of dollars coming in for development, and this is just phase one. Paces has made a long-term commitment to Gulf County, and we look forward to being a, a partner here, and I look forward to my wife getting the job interview down here and being able to move here soon. Thank you very much.
Great, great deal. Anyone else, anyone? If not, Mark, thank you for driving down, have a safe trip back home.
You're welcome.
And we'll have a ribbon cutting over there, hopefully.
We're going to have that as soon as we can. Thank you all very, very much. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, and thank you.
Thanks for everything, Mark.
All right, anything else, Commissioner?
Yes, and I just, I just want to announce that we're going to have a town hall meeting on August the twenty-second at the fire station for any constituents that want to come out and speak with the Paces Foundation and ask any questions on what's going on. That'll be August the twenty-seventh, twenty-second at the fire station. And I, I also would just like to say, talking to lots of people who have the jobs, that want to bring the jobs to Gulf County, the first question they always ask me, but Tan, if I got a job that's carrying a hundred workers, where would a hundred workers live at? So I'm thinking that we starting to cover that first step, to open the door to bring jobs to Gulf County, so I just want to thank everybody for working with me and making this happen.
Well, Commissioner Smiley, I commend you with the hard work I know you've put into this and afforded you, city too. All right, you have anything else?
That's it.
All right, that's it. This time, maybe we can move right along here, we've been here an hour and a half. Take a break, but we want to just continue on.
Wrap it up.
All right, if nothing more from the staff or the boards, I'm going to reach out to the audience now. Anyone in the audience have anything, any business, just ma'am, young lady, please come up. Anyone in the audience has any business for the board, be recognized and you given time. Good morning, how are you today?
Fine, thank you.
If you would, please, Ms. Roberts over here, give her your name and...
Yes, sir.
When you...
Ms. Lovelace, you have an extra one for the record? I'm sorry, I don't.
Yeah, she can.
We'll get one for the commissioner. Thank you. Good morning, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name's Joan Lovelace. I live at sixty-five thirty-six Highway ninety-eight at Saint Joe Beach. I'm not an attorney, I'm just a citizen, a property owner, and a taxpayer.
Just take your time and settle that, okay?
Thank you. This spring, as I was walking on Saint Joe Beach, I discovered several red and white signs had been installed on our beach, which is private property. They had the TDC and County Commission logos on them. These signs said we cannot walk on the sand dunes along with other rules. We have an easement that gives us the right to walk on this property. Since that time, I've had the opportunity to meet with most of the commissioners, Mr. Butler and Mr. Novak, and I want to thank each one of you for your time. Today, I'm asking you to remove these signs. I want to give you three reasons these signs should come down. These signs interfere with our easement rights, these signs are not needed, these signs were installed in violation of Florida statutes one sixty-one. First, these signs interfere with the easement rights of Yon's Edition property owners. I'm aware this topic's been discussed at previous meetings, but the signs are still up. Yon's Edition property owner easement was established in nineteen fifty-one, over sixty-three years ago. The easement was given to the residents of Yon's Edition for this beachfront property so they could always have access to the Gulf. It basically goes from Windmark Beach to Court Street and along the beachfront side of Highway ninety-eight, not including the street ends. This easement is granting the Yon's Edition property owners a perpetual, ongoing, and everlasting exclusive right to walk upon and enjoy this property forever. This easement also prohibits, forbids, or prevents any obstruction or interference by any person whomsoever. Interference is the involvement in the activities and concerns of other people when your involvement is not wanted. At Saint Joe Beach, it's almost impossible to walk from the highway to the beach without walking on a sand dune. These signs create an interference to the rights of Yon's Edition property owners. Second, these signs are not... Second, these signs are not needed. For over sixty-three years, residents and visitors have used this beach. Maybe there have been some extremely rare incidents of dune damage that I'm not aware of, but there are more dunes and sea oats there now than ever before. People don't come to Saint Joe Beach to destroy it, they come because they love it. They love its natural beauty and unspoiled beaches. They come to Saint Joe Beach to enjoy the quiet refuge, the beautiful sunsets it provides. Commissioners, you have hundreds...
Hold, Ms. Lovelace, hold just a minute. I need a motion.
Second.
Motion over here on second. Now, pull the clock, you continue.
They come to Saint Joe Beach to enjoy the quiet refuge and beautiful sunsets. Commissioners, you have hundreds of beach ambassadors living at Saint Joe Beach. If we see someone damaging this beach, we will report it. There's no need for signs along the shoreline. There's no driving on Saint Joe Beach like there is at Cape San Blas, where they may drive for a mile or two, then get out of their vehicle and walk around. At Saint Joe Beach, to get to the beach, a person must walk from the highway over a sand dune to the beach. People would just begin to totally ignore everything the signs say, since they must violate them every time they go to the beach. These signs can be removed from Saint Joe Beach where they're not needed and reused at the Cape where there is a need for them. The county, TDC, and taxpayers will not lose any money, and the signs will not be wasted. There are already signs in place posting the lease law, so there's no need to have two signs with a lease law on it. There are turtle patrol people out each morning during nesting season looking for turtle nests. When a turtle nest is found, they're clearly marked with "Do Not Disturb" signs. We don't need additional signs telling people not to disturb the turtle nest. If it's not broke, don't fix it. These new signs are not needed. And third, these signs were installed in violation of Florida statutes one sixty-one point two-eight of the beach and shoreline preservation. It states, "In conducting its studies and making plans for a beach and shoreline preservation program, the Board of County Commissioners shall," you must do this, "shall hold sufficient public hearings to ascertain the views and feelings of affected property owners and their needs to be served." Not one of the property owners I've spoken with at Saint Joe Beach were ever notified of any hearings concerning the County Commission and TDC posting signs on our dedicated beach or how you could serve our needs. But it goes on, "The County Commission shall," another mandate, you must do this, "shall give proper and reasonable consideration to all in planning the program." Here are two items required by Florida statutes one sixty-one concerning the County Commission. Meet with the affected property owners concerning their needs and give them reasonable consideration. It appears neither of these requirements was met. As county commissioners, you're elected to help the citizens of Gulf County, you're elected to represent our best interest and to stand up for our rights. Please remember, commissioners, it's never okay to violate the citizens' rights. These signs interfere with the easement rights of Yon's Edition property owners, these signs are not needed, these signs were installed in violation of Florida statutes without any notification or input from property owners. Commissioners, I'm asking you this morning to make a motion, to vote, to do the right thing, and remove these signs from Saint Joe Beach. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Ms. Lovelace.
Yes, sir.
Thing, hold just a minute.
Anybody on?
Just a couple of questions, if I may. Ms. Lovelace, on the beach at Saint Joe Beach, number one, how many signs are we talking about roughly?
I have not walked the whole beach. I know of about six or eight, I'm not totally sure, because they're along the beach and I have not walked the whole beach to count them, so...
Number two, when the people access the beach, isn't there a trail that goes to the beach?
Yes, sir.
Primarily in every location, there's a trail?
Yes, sir.
Just hold right here, Commissioner.
Mr. Butler, have we had any, before we put up the signs, what we had complaints about people walking on the dunes and...
Commissioner, the only thing I know on signs is there was an effort to consolidate a group of signs. We had a bunch of odd signs, and we was trying to make it look neater. And, but, no, received, I have received no complaints.
Commissioner Smiley, I have received continual complaints since I've been a county commissioner regarding folks walking their dogs in the dunes and storing their paddy, their beach furniture in the dunes, and I believe it's visitors who don't understand the protection of the dunes and it's not residents, it's visitors, but I have received those complaints.
Do you know for sure those were residents or visitors?
No, I don't know for sure. They were residents who complained, but my assumption is that it's visitors who don't understand. I don't think anyone would store their beach furniture in the dunes or walk their dogs in the dunes if they understood that they're protected. So, I would assume they're visitors who don't understand.
Chairman, if I may, I've spoken with Joan and several others about these signs, and there seems in this Yon subdivision to be a, an issue with these signs. I can tell you, Joan has made a good argument to me. Ms. Miriam Dismuque has certainly been passionate when she called me about this issue. I won't say I support the signs, however, they are appropriate in my district, in District Five on Cape San Blas. I think they're appropriate in most of Saint Joe Beach area, and I think they're appropriate in the Indian Pass, and they're for informational purposes. They're not to, they're not to try to do away with individual rights, although some people take it that way, and I understand that. While I don't agree with all of your assessments, I do agree that in the, in this particular section of beach in this subdivision, that you make a valid argument on the signs. I would like to hear the entire board talk about them a little bit, but I wanna say I support those informational signs, I support the consolidation of them together. I can tell you, since we've started the process at Cape San Blas and Indian Pass, it looks so much better, and there's so much more information for our visitors who don't normally know specific rules, and we have more issues on the Cape and Indian Pass. But you make a valid argument on Yon subdivision.
Mr., I didn't finish up before I was cut off. I want to ask Ms. Jenkins, have you had any complaints?
Yes, sir.
On the...
Yes, sir.
We're talking Yon's?
Oh.
We're talking about one section out there.
There are multiple, there are multiple complaints all along, all of the beaches.
What I'm looking at right here, I'm looking at the sign, but then I'm looking at a sign that's duplicating the same things that we already have signs out there saying.
The...
I mean, I mean, like it said, "Don't disturb the turtle nests or the bird nests and the turtles," which we got a sign right here that said the same thing, so we're duplicating I was saying on different signs. We got different signs, but they saying the same thing, that's what I'm saying.
If I may, Ms. Jenkins, I think, isn't this yellow sign the sign that is put right on the actual turtle nest?
Yes.
Yeah. So, it's a, that's a little bit of a different purpose.
Well, they're not gonna put them out if there's not a nest there, so...
All right.
Anything else?
Ms. Lovelace, you called me probably three months ago, and I told you, I said, "I'm not gonna talk with you on the phone, I'm gonna drive down, sit down, look you in..." And we probably, your husband, you've agreed to me with open arms, courteous, kind, we agreed, we disagreed, but we all left there, we respect each other.
Yes, sir.
Probably, I, what'd you say, five times at least, four, five times down in your business there that I drove down, discussed these very issues with you.
Yes, sir.
In support, I hear you. And, you know, we've talked about it, more or less informational, to try to educate the public. But as a commissioner on this board, I'm willing to work with you, and I think we possibly can come up today.
You ready to make a motion?
Well, I don't make motions. Let me go right over here. I think I have a... Any other commissioner here now?
Yeah, I think the attorney probably's got something...
I'm going now, but I'll go to commissioners first. Now, wait a minute, let's just get it in order. Who wants to go?
I just, I wanna know, I was listening when she was...
All right, you have the floor.
When she was reading the ordinance and saying that we supposed to have a public hearing, did that public hearing take place?
Answer that. I know the answer.
Commissioners, I have, I've been able to speak with Ms. Lovelace on this issue on multiple occasions, and we've gone over the statute, we've addressed, obviously, the sixty-year-old easement rights for the folks in Yon's Edition. And going back to last fall, we had discussed the TDC's recommendations and development of the signs. I just wanna address, Commissioner, your question first? Yes, to answer your question, one word, yes, we have, okay? And I'll get into the statutory requirements. Under statute one sixty-one, we've discussed, Ms. Lovelace and I and commissioners, we've all had individual conversations about this issue. The county, and as she indicated, shall hold sufficient public hearings to ascertain the views and feelings of affected property owners in various localities of the county, and shall give proper notice and reasonable consideration to all the evidence received. The county, maybe not every week, but every other week in this county, has various committees and TDC meetings, they have a subcommittee on beach preservation, you have aquatic preserve meetings. This county is heavily involved, if not a weekly, but a biweekly basis, in addressing the community concerns from the Cape to Saint Joe Beach. They are advertised, they are public, they are recorded, there are minutes to those meetings, and there's recommendations from these various committees to you all, and those are all public hearings. So, it's an ongoing process, it's not, "Let's have a notice for a meeting, and we're gonna talk about the preservation program of Gulf County." It is an evolving process in Gulf County, at least as long as I've served as your attorney, that on at least a regular occasion, I've been stepping into TDC meetings about beach preservation, beach habitat conservation, critical habitats up and down the coastline. So, to answer your question under one sixty-one point two-eight, the county, above and beyond the requirements of the statute, addresses that time in and time out. With regards to the specific statute under one sixty-one point two-six, it talks about the use of the county funds, and I wanna go through each step so you all understand. And I've had these discussions with Ms. Lovelace, so I want you all to know what I've obviously had the discussions with her, and I've received considerable input from the community as well. I live in Yon's Edition Phase One, I wanna disclose that to you all, so neighbors have come up and given me their opinions, and on both sides of it. The use of the county funds, the TDC allocated these funds under their one penny for beach preservation. You, as a county commissioner, delegated that authority and that obligation to your TDC, which you're allowed to do under statute, for them to do this day in, day out. This commission doesn't meet daily on it, but you delegated to your TDC, the TDC has instituted a tax, you allocate funds for these use, you rake the beaches, you clean the beaches, you pick up garbage on these beaches, and you put signage on these beaches. Under the statute one sixty-one point two-eight, there's also a requirement of you all that that authority is delegated to you by the state. You all put a program in place, which you all have, minis, as I've indicated, on how you're gonna go out and monitor, maintain, preserve, nourish all the beaches, both on the Cape and on Saint Joe Beach. You do follow the statute, you are implementing those programs, and as I've indicated in past meetings, signs, as they've evolved over the past year, are an attempt by the TDC on behalf of this commission, which is you've delegated that authority to them, to educate the visitors and find a balance between preserving these beaches and the use of these beaches. I've indicated in the past meetings that Yon's Edition Phase One is unique, just as the Cape San Blas and Commissioner Jaeger's district is unique with aquatic preserve programs and nourishment programs. We have state agencies, federal agencies monitoring those beaches in an air force base. Saint Joe Beach has Yon's Edition, and Yon's Edition has a sixty-year-old use and enjoyment restriction for all the people in that first phase. Ms. Lovelace and neighbors throughout the community have exclusive rights for the use and enjoyment of that beach, and I've encouraged the county commission in the past, it is unique, and we treat it differently. Anything that you're doing right now in educating the public on those beaches is within the statute. As Ms. Lovelace and I have discussed, there's a couple of things about the language of the signs, the location of the signs, and the notice and the impact to the owners versus the visitors to the beach. Short of the county going out and removing physically people from these dunes, these signs are an informational tool. And you stated it affirmatively in past meetings, Ms. Jenkins and the TDC have encouraged the public to be mindful of, Florida statute one sixty-one two-four-two talks about sea oats and damaging your sea oats. There's state statute that puts in place, that you'll see signs that Ms. Lovelace has provided to you, about protecting our sea oats. Above and beyond your ordinances, above and beyond the statute that we're talking about right now, there's other ordinances that apply, I'm sorry, statutes that apply protecting the vegetation, the protection of the sea oats goes to the preservation of those beaches. So, it goes way beyond the one statute we're talking about, the sandy beach doctrine, people's use of these beaches, the exclusive right that people have in Yon's Edition Phase One, and that's why I've spoken with Ms. Lovelace, we're trying to find a balance. One of the, some of the things we talked about is location, we've talked about relocating the signs, maybe landward of the dunes, so it wouldn't be such an irritant, and I think that was the word that we've discussed back and forth, it was an irritant to the property owners. So, can we find a better location? Suggestions about maybe modifying some of the language on the signs. It says, "Do not walk on dunes." Well, if you walk on the dunes, you're going to damage the sea oach, which is then you're gonna be violating a state statute. I've asked you commissioners in the past to state affirmatively that it's not your intent to restrict the property rights of Yon's Edition Phase One. This isn't a land grab, you're not trying to infringe upon those use and enjoyment rights, and you've stated that affirmatively in past meetings. And we've discussed possibly passing a resolution of this commission as a third element to this balance, as it you all state today, that there is no intent other than trying to educate the public of what you should and shouldn't do on those beaches, okay? And this is primarily for visitors, which is what the TDC is geared towards, which is heads and beds, which is for visitors to Gulf County, not for residents. And the fourth element that we had discussed was, and I had suggested as a balance, if you will, is a caveat or some condition on the signs in this location, I think from Pine to Court or wherever Yon's Edition ends, that this doesn't apply to, the conditions on these signs don't apply to the Yon's Edition Phase One property owners, that they do have exclusive rights. I've spoken with the trustee that oversees this trust, and obviously, county historically has gone out and put garbage cans out, you pick up trash, you clean these beaches, you put signs on these beaches. You do that based on recommendations of your TDC and your public work staff, they all come to you, you ratify these decisions, you use county tax dollars, and you go out and put these things in place. So, although this is a significant issue, and it's something I think you need to pay attention to specifically for Yon's Edition, this is universal throughout the whole county. You implement these programs to protect our beaches for the whole benefit of both the visitors and the owners, but in Yon's Edition, there should be some consideration of what property rights are there, and that's why I'd offered Ms. Lovelace and some of the other folks to say, "Is there, is there a way that the county commission and the owners can find some compromise, taking into consideration this deed of easement of use and enjoyment?" And that's really kinda the history of the last two months, or three months, if you will. The signs go back to, I think, August or September of last year, Ms. Jenkins, when the TDC had the signs introduced in public meetings, they had discussions on them, they all approved them. The signs were brought then, and it was recommended that the allocation of funds and the use of signs would be approved by this commission. It was by this commission, and the signs were instructed by the public works to go out and put them on those beaches. Those were all done in open public meetings, and that goes on every week, and I want you all to be aware of that. And this particular sign, now that's been brought to your attention, as I encourage you all, we can treat it differently, 'cause it should be. It's just finding where the county commission and the property owners can find some middle ground.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a recommendation?
You can.
You know, I've stated that I support the signs. I understand that this is unique. What I would love is if we can come to a, in listening to both sides, can we come to a specific language compromise on that particular section, that we can still inform the folks and still inform the visitors of things that they should pay attention to, but yet still respect the rights of Yon subdivision? If it's appropriate, what I'd like to do is let Ms. Lovelace and some of the others maybe work with our staff and work with our county attorney to see if we can come to that compromise. If we can't, we'll address it at the end of that, at the end of those negotiations, so to speak, and address it again from the board, but I'd love to see you sit down with our county attorney and see if we can't come up with something in the Yon subdivision. We can always use those signs, because we have to replace them from time to time. We can always use those signs in other places, so it's not a loss of signs, so to speak, but just for Yon subdivision, be, start a negotiation process, so to speak, so we can get that worked out.
Let's go hear this, right here. All right, all right, she gonna yield to?
I don't, I don't have no, I don't have no problem with Mr. Jaeger's recommendation, but in the, in the moment of waiting on his recommendation to come through for them to talk, I'd like to put a motion that we move this sign off the beach and let them come up with another sign, come up with something to take place of it, because this is causing them a disturbance. I'm getting telephone calls about this.
All right, let me, wait, wait just a minute. I wanna, Commissioner Smiley, and I recognize you and you and you and all, everybody. Let me, would you hold your... Let me, would you hold your motion just a moment?
Yes, sir.
Would you, all right, Ms. Lovelace, do you have any more?
Yes, sir.
All right, does anyone in the audience that lives in this area, Yon's Edition, Mr. Robert, surely, we can come to you, or you can come up here, whichever be the easier, on this subject?
It's on this subject.
Yes, on the signs, on, anyone else? Now, if you do, hold your hand where I won't, I don't want to overlook anybody.
I really don't own any property there anymore. I have, the guy that started all this was my father-in-law, Mr. Kenny. And he and I had lots of talks about this situation. If he'd left it all to me, y'all wouldn't even be having this meeting. But I didn't encourage him, because he wanted to leave something to somebody, you know? And he didn't realize what he was leaving people, but he did. But he was always concerned about being able to drive down the beach and see the water. I mean, he was concerned about the people. Every time somebody bought a lot from him, and by the way, a lot in those days, $600 bought a front lot, $400 bought a back lot. But those people kept coming to him, "Mr. Kenny, are you going to sell this land up here, and we can't see nothing? We're going to end up like Panama City and all that?" He said, "No, I'm going to take care of it, but I'm going to wait until I get through and get everything all squared away." So that's the man I'm representing here. I'd like to see his legacy carried on. Now, I've surveyed this, and I've heard all you talking, I'm not going to bore you. But the thing that kind of bothered me about it, the whole situation, when it was brought to my attention, is I went to Windmark 1, I went to Windmark 2, I went to the little piece of 100 yards of beach there, before you get to St. Joe Beach, where you get into this area, all the way up to the other place up there. But the thing that kind of got me was, when I looked at all the signs, in some places ain't no signs. I mean, you don't go into St. Joe Windmark 2 and go down the beach and put a bunch of signs up. Why don't you do that? I know why you don't do that, and we won't even discuss it. But nevertheless, Windmark 1, Mr. old county commissioner that went in there, you know, they done locked the gates now. He went in there, that now you can't even go in there and look. I couldn't, I don't know if they got any signs or not, because they wouldn't let me in, you know? So I went every place, up and down the thing. Now, there is some signs in areas where the beach access is, are in that area. But if you will go over there and go into Windmark 1 and drive down on there, and there's a lot of docks going out there, I just see one sign. Not one. It said anything about beach preservation, and that's all I've heard, is beach preservation. But there seems to be one area you want to preserve, and not the rest, you know? So, you know, maybe you don't want to book them or whatever, but you get down to the other side of this thing, on then, in jurisdiction, I noticed he got on, in jurisdiction, who has jurisdiction to put up this and put up that, put up everything else, you know? But I don't think that the people who should have been at the, maybe at those meetings were, realized that they were having a meeting, you know? So you got the addresses of the people who live in that Yon's Edition, just send them all an email, that we're going to have a meeting, you know? And that kind of solved that problem. But up in the, uh...
Let me move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
About a second. Continue on, Mr. Robert.
Okay, thank you, sir. And up in the areas up there, on the other end, the very end on the other side, I don't see any signs up there. You know, where all the beach is just covered up with people? I don't see any signs up there. Yeah, you go in there, you go up to that other place up there, and they got a private beach there, and their signs are very specific. You know, this beach was dedicated to people in Yon's Edition. But up on that next sign up there, it says enforced by the Sheriff's Department. That means that your tax dollars are protecting that beach. Well, why aren't they protecting the other beaches? Is that just one beach that gets protected? You know? And these other signs that you're talking about, about dressing dogs, there ain't one up there. So you can let them run loose up there, but you can't let them run loose down. I think that when you get through your signs, and where you're going to put them, all I have to say is, be uniform. Whatever, your cape is pretty uniform, I'll have to say that. Where you exit and where you enter, everything is uniform. They're all the same. Out there, there's nothing the same. There's just certain areas, maybe somebody complains about it, so we'll address that issue. But other places, there's no signs, you know? So that's all I got to say. Be, you know, teach, you know, be, be, be uniform. Sorry, signs. If you want to protect the beach, protect all the beaches, not just one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the audience? We've got a gentleman back here. Sir, if you would, come on.
Mr. Chairman?
Not over here.
My name's Jill Mizerek, 138 Atlantic Street.
You're not spelling that last night.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, you have a follow-up.
Real quick here, Commissioners, I like your idea. Pull them down. Give us an opportunity to work this out. But in the meantime, I don't want to fear being arrested by the sheriff for walking on the dunes. I love those dunes. I love the beach, I love this community. This is kind of one of those slippery slopes, where, you know, residents might be concerned that they're going to lose something.
True.
Pull them down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? Anyone slide, anyone else? If not, then I'm going back. Attorney, I'm sorry. Call her up.
Just to follow up on Mr. Roberts' and Ms. Mizerek's comments, and as well as Mrs. My comments to Ms. Lovelace and the Commissioners in the past is, the fact that this is a unique area of St. Joe Beach, and it's a dynamic coastal community, and I don't think any of you Commissioners would dispute that, this Gulf County is a dynamic coastal community, it's constantly evolving. There's very different areas. The trust that's in place and the needed restrictions in place are clear. And it's been my goal and recommendation that we not get into positions of drawing hard lines, from the county, nor the residents, nor the visitors. When you get into drawing hard lines, then is the extreme pulling off every garbage can and every sign off of that beach, and treating, and these, they all should be treated differently, but the county extends services to all your coastal community and provides signage, as Mr. Roberts had indicated, Ms. Lovelace, trash collection, monitoring, preservation, nourishment. If both sides obviously draw hard lines, there's going to be interpretations as to what the 60-year-old deed restriction is, interpretation as to what the statutes are. Up until now, there's always been a very good balance in that community as to access to the beaches and not restricting visitors, being able to utilize those beaches. The county has ordinances in place, not just for St. Joe Beach, but for the Cape. There are property rights that's gone all the way to the Supreme Court with regards to people's rights to the mean high water line. It's my recommendation that the county not get into an interpretation of these hard lines, either in Yon's Edition or these other issues, but try to find a balance. And I'd be certainly welcome to work with Ms. Jenkins and try to find something with regards to Yon's Edition that would find some kind of middle ground. As I indicated, I don't think that it was their intent to strictly enforce the trust and those deed restrictions, and nor do I understand it to be the county commission's intent to do a land grab or start imposing their will in violation of a deed of restriction. If it is, then you can provide that direction to me, and we can head in a different direction. But going back a year, I know the intent behind the signs was to educate visitors. Can we modify the message and the location and the delivery of that message? I don't know that the TDC, we could carry it back. I think you have a meeting coming up that we can work on specifically with regards to that area, but it's whatever the commission, you all provide us that directive.
No, I just want to mention that I think one of the issues is that we have a swath of beach that to visitors appears to be open beach for the public to access. And the TDC sees this beach as an important asset to this county. So they have designed these signs that are light in nature, or an attempt to be light in nature, to inform visitors as to the rules. I have myself seen visitors in the dunes, and I know it is because they do not understand that walking in the dunes harms the dunes. And it jeopardizes our beaches and our protection from storm surge. Our beaches are one of our most important assets in this county. And I believe that that was the motivation of the TDC in placing these signs along our entire coastline. Now, no offense to Commissioner Jaeger, he is a great advocate for his district, and I want the same protections in our district, in District 3. And I have received numerous calls and spoken face-to-face with numerous folks in Yon's Edition who appreciate the signs and appreciate the education to the public. Now, by virtue of saying to not walk in the dunes, by definition, a dune is a raised level of the sand. The paths through the dunes are certainly not dunes. You are not walking on a dune when you walk through a path. So we're looking at an issue of semantics, and I think most people understand that. There has been a lot of hype that has been put out there, that the county is looking at some land grab. Now, I have been contacted by people that are also concerned that the Yon's Edition, some of the Yon's Edition people, a small group of people, are attempting to eliminate the public access to the beach. And I think that's something that we need to look at. A lot of people access the beach there. I believe, as Mr. Roberts said, that this was an intent by the person who made, Mr. Kenny and Mrs. Kenny, who made this dedication to have that beach open. But if this is a public beach, and we are taking care of that beach and picking up the trash, that the TDC is taking care of the trash, and they have put those informative signs out there to let our visitors know. I think that this has gotten way out of hand. Now, if there's, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of a lot of signage. It's not attractive. We need to minimize that. We need to appreciate our beautiful scenery here without signs everywhere. But we do need to educate our public. So I do think we need to look at some compromise. But is this a public beach or not? It's been a beach that's been accessed by the public for a number of years. So I think that may be one of the questions. But I would go along with our attorney and say that we shouldn't have a knee-jerk reaction and just take down every sign. I think we need to have Ms. Jenkins, who clearly, her main focus in this county is the best interest of this county, to work with Ms. Lovelace. And we have all talked to Ms. Lovelace and Mr. Lovelace, Pastor Lovelace, at length about this issue. But there are also several people in Yon's Edition who appreciate the signs, who want to protect the dunes, who have complaints about people at that end of the beach that visit, that camp out overnight, and that abuse the beach. So this is a bigger issue than just taking down the signs.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, can I ask, just to clarify, two issues with the commission? It would help maybe bring some resolution to the issue. The first issue is with regards to location, and we can carry that back to the TDC if you all would like. Certainly, Yon's Edition, the issue of the location of the signage. In the past, you have signs on Yon's Edition Phase 1, on the beach. With regards to these signs and the number of signs, obviously, that's been comments. If we can get some direction from the commission with regards to location, we talked about landward versus the seaward side of those dunes. And then the other issue is obviously the language of the signs. Those signs are not made to stand up, I don't think, 10 years. I think they're...
Lightweight.
They're lightweight signs that are going to be constantly replaced. So the language and the message on the signs versus the location of signs, and I think if we have some clarity as to location, then we can work on messaging. But with regards to the legal interpretation, I would ask the commission to give us some direction on the location of these signs on Yon's Edition Phase 1. If there's a compromise that we can get them to the landward side of those dunes, so they're not on the actual beach, the difference between the Cape and St. Joe Beach is, there is beach driving on the Cape. Those signs serve a different purpose, if you will, on the Cape, when you're driving, and you're driving up to those signs. On St. Joe Beach, there is no driving. So if we can take that back to the TDC, that would be the first issue. The second is with regards to the language and the message that's delivered on that. And like I said, I've already identified that there is a special right that's been in place for over half a century on that St. Joe Beach for these property owners. We should be mindful of that, and we can find some compromise in terms of the message delivered to the visitors on that section.
What I'm seeing here, I don't, I don't think, I was raised here as a kid, and on those beaches, never had any problems, come and go, come and go, come and go. And apparently, we're talking Yon's Edition, it has, but you live in that area, don't you? It is, as Mr. Roberts stated, the family, a lot of the old families, they thought ahead for the people. But I'm, Ms. Lovelace, would you come back? I don't like to address people in the audience. I address people here at the podium. I'm, come on, and I'll talk. I'm getting some mixed emotions here. Have you sat down with your Commissioner? Now, I know you have on me, and I can't speak for these others.
No, sir. I've never had a face-to-face meeting with...
But have you sat down with Commissioner 3, and you all tried to maybe get some middle ground, or have you?
No, sir. I spoke with her one time on the phone, and basically, she said the signs could come down. I had waited about a week, they were still there. I called back and asked her if we could meet. There was, I never got a call back. I called her back again about a week later, asked, could we meet? She finally called my husband back and left a message, "I should see the attorney." And that's the communication I've had with her.
Ms. Lovelace?
All right, well, just a minute, now, just, just a minute. I still, just a minute, just a minute, and you can clarify. But I'm looking here at a letter, did you receive a letter from Commissioner Bryan?
Yes, sir.
Can I read just a part of it?
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Bryan, it says, "As you know, I have spoken several times of you and your husband, Pastor Lovelace."
That's true.
Now, I've got some, is something, all right, I'll recognize, okay.
I only remember speaking with her one time.
Okay. All right, all right, now, you hold, and we're going to go right here.
Ms. Lovelace, we, we spoke a couple of times, I've spoke several times with Pastor Lovelace, and you have been out of town when I have called, and I asked you to speak with the attorney, because he and Ms. Jenkins were handling this issue. Although you have represented to the people of Yon's Edition that I have made some type of ruling here in putting these signs out, and that this is my program, this is absolutely not true. This is a TDC program that was put in place, along with many other mechanisms, to protect our beaches along our entire county. This is not something that I put in place. And we spoke, in total, I've spent hours and hours on the phone with Pastor Lovelace and with you. I, I do not, not about this, not just about this issue, but overall, since I've been a commissioner, this has been a regular communication. And the last time I talked to Pastor Lovelace, you were out of town, and I said, "Mrs. Lovelace is not satisfied, please have her call me." That was our last conversation. And then I got the copy of the letter that you had sent out. Now, I had asked you to speak to our attorney, because he was handling the issue, and this is not something that I put in place. Now, I have also received several calls from people who have received your letter that have expressed that they appreciate the signs, and that they are concerned for, they've seen the chairs propped up against the turtle nests, they've seen the items placed in the dunes. Now, I, the signs are not my issue. If they are not legal, then they need to come down. But I am concerned for our beaches, our dunes. Your position when we spoke was that you can cross the dunes at any place. And I explained to you that that is in violation of state law. Now, the paths that are there are not dunes, they are paths. So I don't understand where, where the position that you're taking lies. If the signs are inappropriate, they need to come down. But your position is that the county has no authority on the beach, then should we be picking up the trash? We need to work these things out. These are legal issues. I happen to be an attorney, but I am not the county's attorney. And that is why I asked you to speak with the county attorney, and he is working with the TDC, who put this program... the TDC who put this program in place. But we have spoken, and I've spoken with Pastor Lovelace many times. I don't know exactly what's going on here. There's clearly something more than the issue of just these signs. It's just not the sign issue, and nobody is preventing anyone from accessing the beach. So, I think we have a bigger issue here.
You still have the floor?
No, I'll go ahead.
May I respond, please?
All right.
I mean, she's addressed me on several issues, so I would like to respond.
Wrap this up here very shortly. Put enough on it. All right, go ahead, Ms. Lovelace.
Ms. Bryan, I supported you. I voted for you. I was so glad to see a woman on this board. I didn't want to be here today. And so, first thing that happened, I reached out to my commissioner, and I couldn't get any help. So, I reached to the chairman and looked for help. And since that time, I've spoken with every one of the commissioners here. They were all very helpful, more than willing to sit down and talk with me, except for you. You would not meet with me. And, you know, this is your district. You should meet with your constituents. I sent out those letters to inform the residents of what's going on on their beach. That's your job. You should have done that. You should let the residents there know what's going on and have meetings and meet with your constituents. And that's why I sent the letters out, and that's why I'm here today, because many of the residents don't know what's going on. Most of them don't live here. They can't come to the meetings. They don't know what's happening. Something this important, that affects something that's been into effect for over 60 years, you need to send a letter, or meet, or call your constituents. And that's all I'm asking.
Ms. Lovelace, there's nothing really going on, other than informing the public of the rules. It is an open stretch of beach where anyone driving along Highway 98 will stop and enjoy the beach. Whether, whether they should or not is a legal issue, but they do because it's an open beach, and they stop and they enjoy it. And the TDC made the effort to educate them. Now, I understand, your husband has told me that you and a small group of people are trying to acquire this beach land. And I'm not certain exactly what is going on here, but I do believe it's a bigger issue than just these signs. Well, it is owned by a trust.
It's private property. It is private property. It's not public property.
No, it's not. But he has said that you are trying to acquire the land, a group.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lovelace.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we beat this horse and anything else here. Mr. Smiley, you want to be recognized?
Mr. Jaeger, what was your recommendation?
My recommendation is for Ms. Lovelace to sit down with our county attorney and the TDC director and see if we can't come up with some common language that works for them, that serves their purpose. And if they can't, then we'll readdress the issue later on. But that's what my recommendation is. I'm absurd.
I have a question.
Hi, sir. My name's Chuck Messer. Mr. Lawyer, you said that, and they said that the CDC Council is just people that collect or something that has to do with the CDC and the Tourism Development Council. You have, you can't be just one of us. You have to be a person that collects the money or uses the money, correct? So, we can't get on there. We can go to the meeting, but I've been to those meetings, and we can't even speak. So, what's the point of us going to that meeting?
All right.
We don't have a representative. Most of the citizens do not have a representative on those.
Okay. Please, here's time right here, hold up, Chuck, just a moment.
That's why we have a problem with that.
Hold up just a minute. Let me go right over here to this attorney. You asked a question. Let's give him the opportunity to answer you.
Sure. I'll do the very best I can. The individuals appointed by the county commission are required by statute to be in one of those two fields. So, someone that rents a home can be a bed tax collector. Someone that owns a rental company can be a bed tax collector. Someone that owns, that's right, someone that has a kayak business or a restaurant is in a tourism industry or a hotel. So, those folks by statute are required to have that qualification to be appointed because they're in tune with the tourism that comes here.
I'm just saying, we don't have any input in those. We don't, we can't get anything from them to us.
At those TDC meetings, under Florida statute, they're required to be sunshines because they're advisory board members.
But we can go.
That's correct.
But we can't do anything.
So, the next level to the TDC sunshine meetings is the county has a public speaking policy. And so, just as the chairman asks everybody that we've adopted a year ago under statute.
I'm just saying, though, you said those are open meetings, but they're not open to us.
Yes, sir, they are.
Where would you go?
Chuck, hold up, hold up just a minute. Let the attorney finish, and I'll come back to you. You're going to be giving all the time.
And I know Ms. Jenkins is here, so, and I go to all the meetings, but there is, there, God bless you, there is a motion made by the chairman or a member of that TDC each time. There's a second, just as you'll see today. And then they'll open it up to public discussion. They ask if there's comments on the actions, just as an advisory board. So, when this issue came up presumably last fall at their meetings, there's an opportunity for anybody that's there, they can raise their hand and speak on these issues. They're not on the advisory board, but they can speak on them. And I know, Ms. Jenkins, I think you encourage and you run the meetings along with Mr. Warner, but the public does have an opportunity to participate.
But if these things concern us.
Sure.
How can they, the CDC, Tourism Development Council, put things in place that have to do with us when we have no say-so in it? I don't understand this.
Sure.
I mean, they're putting restrictions on us, even though we don't have any representation on that board. I mean, it's not, they shouldn't make those recommendations that concern us that go past their, their scope.
There are no restrictions, other than just what the state law is.
Well.
About the sea oats and the turtles. They're not restrictions.
Well, they're jumping, they're, I don't know, I have a real problem with this.
You have a problem with?
They're putting things in place that concern us when we don't have representation on those boards.
So, Mr. Messer, do you take the signs to mean that you cannot cross the paths that are on the beach?
Well, you said the paths aren't the dunes. I beg to differ on that one, because anywhere else in the state, if you cross somebody's path that they made through the dunes, which is what those are, then you can get arrested.
Okay.
And that's, the path through the dune is still part of the dunes.
So, the issue is that you are fearful that the county is saying, do not cross the paths.
Because we didn't have to walk a half-mile to get over to the dune.
So...
That's the problem. Now, if you make, if you make a regular walkway designated by the county across that, but then you can't do that because we own it. You don't.
Let me ask you this.
But you're trying to tell us we can't walk through the dunes anywhere we want, even though it's our property, and by rule, we can.
What if we had a revised sign that said, please stay on the path?
That's, but you don't have that.
Would that be a more palatable sign?
Personally, I think, I can't talk to everybody out there.
And have the other information to not pick the sea oats and not...
Well, if you're going to do that, we should have, where we don't have roofing paper, tar paper down on the paths, too.
And we don't, we don't do that.
That's another issue. I know you don't, but people do put them there. And we do, should have designated paths, I think, but I'm just speaking for me.
Chuck, we're going to cut off here. Anybody else, anybody else now?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody, thank you, sir. We're fixing to, I think we're going to get something offered up here that will be satisfactory. Never at all, but it will, wait a minute, sir, you want to speak?
Yeah, I won't take much time.
All right, sir, come on.
I'll come soon as I can.
I'm going to say this.
I could do one again.
All right, I'm going to say this, and I see the news media is over here. I'll entertain you and one more after this gentleman about the signs and this before us. Now, anybody else wants to talk about anything, that's fine.
Proceeds, Mr. Chairman, if I can, you're going to call for the question, as you're saying, indicating, I just wanted to clarify what your action is.
But I'm going to recognize this gentleman, and I'll recognize one more. I want that clearly understood. No one's cut off. All right, sir, give her your name and...
I'm just fixing to do that.
All right, sir, go ahead.
My name's Skip Griffey, 135 Canal Street, Yon's Edition.
Oh, yeah, I know where you're at.
G R I F F I E S. Sounds like some level-headed people here. You know, placement of the signs were done without my knowledge. I have to say to you, Ms. Bryan, I met you one time, that was when you were running for office. Haven't heard from you since. That's end of that. We protect our beach. Yes, we have a pathway. A friend of ours started our pathway some 40 years ago.
Longer than that.
Or 50, I don't know, even on Canal Street, anyway. We want to protect our beaches as much as anybody. I think one logical thing that our county attorney has said is placement of signage. People who visit, parking the right way of the highway, parking on property that belongs to the Yon's Edition or whoever, don't know what's going on until they get on the beach. So, I think placement at these entrances would be a very logical thing to do. I think the word please doesn't hurt anybody. I think that's another thing that you can do. Everyone's fearful of having their rights taken away. It's happened in this country for I don't know how many years. That's all I have to say. Don't take the people's rights away. Protect their rights in addition to that. There's two no-parking signs on the beach side of, in the Yon's Edition, two no-parking there in front of the same person's house. I know you have to deal with DOT and everybody else to get those signs up, but I don't know who pulled those strings. But there's no parking at Canal Streets, there's no parking signs there, there's no, there's no signs there, there's no signs at Pine Street, there's no signs at Bay Street, there's no signs on up the beach. So, as he said, let's be fair. Mr. Roberts made it very clear, let's be fair. Let's protect the rights as well as inform people of their rights. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Now, one more. Right. Closed. Commissioner?
I would like to put a motion on the floor that we remove those signs, but I would like to keep the recommendation of Mr. Jaeger down here that they sit down and come up with something.
Now?
In the meantime, the signs come down.
Move the signs. Is that the motion?
Yes.
All right, I have a second to that motion.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the motion? I'm sorry.
Mr. Jaeger put a recommendation on the table. I have nothing against that recommendation, but in the meantime, them carrying out his recommendation, I would like the signs to be tucked on.
That's my motion to remove signs.
Well, I'll second the motion.
All right, we've got a second here. Now, open here on the board for discussion, and I do have a...
I'd like to hear from Ms. Jenkins in this time.
We are, that's where we're going.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, just very briefly, as stated, this is my third season. The first two seasons, I was getting to understand our visitors, hear from people. The first two seasons, we received numerous complaints. We also did a complete inventory of the signage that was from Indian Pass through St. Joe Beach that was either up or down, or here or there, very confusing, which actually warranted more complaints from people because there was just not uniformity. As we begin our branding and as we went into our third season, we, my council formed a beach grooming committee, because in addition to that, beach cleaning was all over the place, trash pickup was all over the place. So, it began with branding, and that's how those signs came in. And again, they were funded by the one penny. I would just like to say, I'm willing to work with anybody. I'm, there were never an intention of anybody's personal property rights, those are things that I am unaware of. But I would say, we are almost through season. And as we work together and with the county attorney, please let me pull the data from my beach ambassadors and the beach maintenance technicians so we can get a global understanding of our beaches, of the issues from each end of the beach. I don't know if anybody noticed this, but we've already taken off over 90,000 pounds of trash off the beach in the past 10 weeks. A lot of that is coming from, they are in the dunes, to the point where, you know, our people on the beach are concerned about the dunes, as well as other residents and visitors. I, again, am more than happy to work with people, but please don't forget that we have been, we have been collecting data from St. Joe Beach, Indian Pass, not Windmark Beach because we had not had an agreement until this year to maintain and clean the Windmark beaches. We do not clean Phase One. And we do, on an as-needed basis, clean the public access. So, again, I'm more than happy to work with the attorney, look at the signage, but don't forget that we are collecting data, and we can have a balance, not only for the entire beaches of Gulf County, but if there are some individual cases as well. And that's all I'd like to say, unless you have any questions.
No. I have to...
I've got one question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roberts?
Do you clean the beaches at Guff Air?
They clean all of St. Joe Beach.
I'm asking you, do y'all clean the beaches at Guff Air?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's close.
But only along the water edge, which is public access, all along the water edge?
High water line down.
Right.
From the high wa, sir, from the high water line down.
Mr. Chairman, now, Mr. Chairman, I think we've got the motion and second. I think we've...
All right, we've got the motion and second. I want to put my two cents in on this. I think we need to narrow this down, because the motion is to remove the signs. We need to designate where they're going to be removed from, I think, the first street out there, to my reckoning, is Pine Street. You want to remove them from Pine up to, where's the Yon's Edition? Court Street, the Bible, where's it go to? All right, we need, we need, and we can get together with these people, the attorney, we may have to have, Ms. Lovelace, we may have to have some meetings out there with the people, and come to some good middle ground. But right now, this board is showing in good faith. Are you willing to modify your motion that it's from, what did I say, Pine Street to Court Street, the Yon's Edition?
Is that the problem?
Yes. That's where the problem, now, we, Commissioner Jaeger says the beach down there is fine.
Right, I want to address the problem area.
All right, that would be from, am I correct, Pine Street to where Mr. Butler, you live out there?
Court.
Fine, the court, that's the Yon's Edition.
That's right.
Would you be willing to put that with your motion?
Ms. Lovely, is that your complaint?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we got there, we got a second here. Any more from the audience on this? Anything? Any further on the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just so the public knows, and Ms. Lovelace and the folks in Yon's Edition, I'm also going to reach out to the trustee and the trust, who are the representatives. Yes, I'd like to have their input.
I'll have to come back here reactive, let's be proactive.
I just want to let the public know that we'll include their input and cooperation, ideally.
And you have spoken with them, and I have spoken with them as well, as the owners of the property. So, it was something that was discussed with the...
Okay.
And just as one, before you vote, just as one little side note here, I do appreciate the great amount of power that has been assumed that I have here in this issue. But anyone who watches these meetings should know that I am the one vote in the four-to-one. They call me Joanna Born One Bryan, so I really have very little power on this board. Trying to do the best I can, but I have not been the person who has tried to stop any of your rights or limit any rights, nor I don't believe anyone has. So, let's just make that clear. There's been a lot of hype out there and people worrying, and I can understand wanting to protect your property rights, but we also need to protect our dunes. So, my second stance.
All right. Any opposition to the motion? All right, this motion passed five and oh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ms. Jennifer, I just want to tell you that you're doing a wonderful job, and I learned something a long time ago. You take a person who do nothing, don't nobody ever talk about him, okay? So, you keep up the work that you're doing because you're doing a good job for Gulf County.
All right, anyone else in the audience have any business before the board? Yeah, two people. All right, Ms., you're going to yield. All right, gentleman over here. We'll catch you next, okay? All right, everybody.
Tom Sims, 1730 County Route 36, Weewahichka.
Tom Sims, 1730 Canyon Road 386, Weewahichka. I think you need to come back and look at this nickel gas tax that you voted on. A lot of people, it doesn't hurt, but it hurts the low income, and it hurts the people that are on fixed income, and I think you need to re-look at it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think there'll be, how many public hearings on that? There'll be, there'll be two public hearings, so there'll be plenty of opportunity, and you still have to have the supermajority, so there'll be plenty of time for public comment on that. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Here, we have a young lady. McElroy, would you come, please?
I know it's been a very long meeting. Kristy McElroy, Port St. Joe, Florida. At the last meeting, it was stated that the PACS lawsuit against myself and the county commission was dismissed on a technicality. So, and it all depends on who wants to debate this issue, but I, of course, went to Tallahassee yesterday, got the certified motion to dismiss. There was no technicality, and I could go through a litany of information, but it has been a long meeting, there was no technicality. The PAC chose to dismiss the claim based off of, they didn't want to move forward with it. We were going to, in turn, ask for attorney fees if they moved forward, and when they lost, if they lost, and they abandoned their claim and dismissed it. No technicality. So I will share this, of course, with the county clerk.
You can.
Before I go to my seat, if there is any information that myself, as a layperson or the county attorney, needs to address, I'll be happy to address that. Is there any information? Because a lot of times, what happens is you get back to your seat, and then the commissioner from District Three throws something out, and that causes angst to the person that has to either return to the podium or defend their position from their chair, and that is not part of Robert's rules of order.
Good dear, thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Got a young lady here?
This is just some good information, I'm not gonna...
Good, I need some good information.
I don't know, we're only coming to meetings.
Okay, state your name right there.
Diana Burkett, 1910 Juniper Avenue.
There you go, Diana.
This is just for you guys.
Good.
I mean, you did here, but I've actually been waiting on our new website.
Oh, 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 yeah.
I just want to let you know, we run the Christian Community Development Fund, it's a nonprofit, and I just mainly wanted the board members to know what we do. We work for all of Gulf County and Mexico Beach. We've incorporated Mexico Beach. We've worked all over, right at 700 houses in the last 10 years, for low to disabled, low-income, very low-income disabled people, and it's at no cost to the homeowner, and we use volunteers. We also have a group that comes in every year from First Baptist Church in Opalat, Alabama. Last year, they brought 300 in here, warrant they stay out in your area.
Yeah.
I did a little survey with them, and they're spending about $34,000 every year they come in to our county, so I just want to keep that in consideration. We're here to help the people, to, I would love for y'all to check out our new website. We've got a Facebook connection. I'd love at any time to sit down and talk with you individually. If you know of anybody we can help, let us know, and just kind of getting information out to all the people in the county and at Mexico Beach. I try to get it to the commissioners and city and county, okay? Any questions?
Right here, Commissioner McElroy.
Just a couple things. Number one, I'd like to thank you about twice. Number one, the first one is with you and your foundation helping my brother, that was a great help. The family really appreciates it. I appreciate the phone call that you gave me the other day. We're going into some schooling after this meeting here. I don't know if we'll get to meet today or not, but I will meet with you and sit down with you.
Okay, all right, that'll be fine.
All right.
And the only thing I'd like to say, Ms. Chairman, is what a great organization. These are the types of organizations that make our community great. Diana, I appreciate your work. You've done it for a long time, and it's a great organization.
Well, it's a blessing, and there's a lot of elderly people out there, a lot of sick people. We've built, I think, seven wheelchair ramps in the last three weeks, and they're to state specifications. We've built so many, I even gave my project manager permission to buy one of those little hand augers, so they don't have to use pole hole diggers anymore, but we got a lot of good referrals. We got the churches, Sacred Heart, senior citizens, nursing home, AA. So any of you guys ever have a question, call my work number, and then I can give you my cell number, and we can talk.